Miss Kay, how long will we keep these on for?
I think...
Seven, I didn't deal with it. Ready when you are. It's seven. Yep.
All right. If we get all quiet down at seven o'clock, it's time to get the meeting started. All right. Call to order, the regular meeting of the Kalamazoo City Planning Council Commission. Can I get a roll call?
Yes. Aardet Baumann?
Here.
Bissonette?
Here.
Casqueva?
Here.
Tolber?
Here.
Patelco?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
And Swanna D'Senzo are excused. They notified us that we're not able to make it tonight.
All right, thank you. We've got an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes we'd like to make to the formal agenda?
Yes, staff would like to move item F1 before item E1 to put the CIP presentation ahead of the public hearing and rezoning request.
Understood. All right, can we get a motion to adopt the formal agenda with item F, the capital improvement plan, in front of the public hearing for PC 2500, 2025-05?
So moved.
Seconded. Most moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda is updated. In our packets, in our packets, we have the minutes from the September meeting in which we inducted a new member. Welcome. Your first meeting. Mr. Bissonette? Any other changes or comments folks have about the minutes from last time? All right, seeing nothing, can we get a motion to adopt or approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion?
Seconded.
Seconded, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, do we have any communications or announcements?
No. Well, the communication and announcement is there is a special meeting, a joint meeting of the Planning Commission, if I don't get this wrong, the zoning board of appeals, and the natural feature protection review committee. And the intent of the training is to go over the roles and responsibility of each board with the other boards, and then highlight where overlap, and each body's role in the larger process. So the liaisons from each body will be giving a training on that to the three boards. That's going to be November 12th, Wednesday, at 2:45 North Rose Street at CPED offices.
All right, thank you.
And then otherwise, just the communications received for the public hearing, which are in the binder up there with you guys.
We have a big binder. All right. And so for anyone wondering if their email was received, their email was received and it was distributed, we have a large amount of communications and announcements. All right, so with that, let's go then to the capital improvement plan discussion item.
All right, this is Director Baker and City Engineer, James Baker is here to give a presentation on the capital improvement plan. The role of the planning commission is to review it so there is not an action necessary from you guys on it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good evening, planning commission members. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, presenting on the 2026 proposed capital improvement plan. In your packets, you also have the line item details of the specific projects. I'm not going to get into the specific projects. I'm going to provide kind of an overview of the different departments that are represented in that plan. So that capital improvement plan provides project funding and capital project deliverables by funding department, and those are general fund, parking, major streets, local streets, water and wastewater. And to kind of talk through what some of those examples would be, water and wastewater really is focused on regulatory compliance, increased investment in infrastructure, also improving water quality, and we've got some other initiatives that are focused in some of the specific plans. General fund covers parks, facilities, public safety. Farmer's Market was an example of a project that is nearing completion this year. We also have all the equipment and facilities around City Hall. That fund also supports heavy equipment purchases and dump trucks, things like that for the city's fleet on the public works side. Parking is a kind of a new program that was broken out separately. There are no parking projects for this next year, but there was in 2025, so we'll show that as well. And then, of course, major and local streets. These funds are provided by Act 51, so that is state gas taxes that are collected and redistributed down at the local level. There's limitations in what we can spend those dollars on. There's programs for stormwater, for street lighting. Streets for All Plan is part of that. And then, you know, part of the overall plan is improving safety within that street network as well. Just giving you some bar chart overviews. Altogether, all those capital plans I described are about $138 million. You see the different bar charts here across the different funds. MST, which is your major streets fund, that's quite a large investment showing in 2026 and a lot of that. We'll get into that when we go to the street specific slide. But a lot of that's that Streets for All program. A majority of those dollars include federal grants that are coming in, that are administered at the local level. General fund, still significant investments there. Local streets, that's $1.6 million. That's a double the amount of investment that we had last year. This same slide last year in 2025 had local street funding at $800,000. Water funding, about $47 million. There's a lot of investment continuing there in infrastructure. And wastewater, about $26 million. Parking, zero, but we show it on the slide. Specific and general funds, some projects that you're going to see starting in 2026 include the Arcadia Creek Festival site. A lot of work and involvement in that, a lot of public meetings, a lot of focus on that project. There's some field and equipment upgrades at Homer's Circuit Field. Millen Park, you're also seeing some continued investment in that park and the infrastructure in that park. Heavy equipment fleet, things like dump trucks, loaders, that sort of thing. Those are, that's equipment purchases to help support public works. And then, public safety, if you look at the line items, there's a pretty significant investment in self-contained breathing apparatus. We're at kind of an end of a life cycle for all the SCBA devices that they wear into fires to support the community. So this is not like a replacement year. This is a holistic program to replace that entire inventory and then pick back up probably in 10 years with additional replacements. Sorry there, I want a little click happy on you. So looking at streets, we got kind of major and local streets. Major streets, the really big projects that we're talking about are Streets for All projects. These are federal grants that are going to be bringing forward, administered through relationships and contracts with the State Department of Transportation, so MDOT. We plan to begin construction on Kalamazoo Ave, West Main, and Douglas. This year, there's additional streets that will happen in future years. And then also Protect Grant. We started work on Westonage Avenue with Phase Zero. That work is coming up, you know, kind of coming toward a close here. And then we're getting ready to turn and continue that work down Mishikau and then down Stadium Drive all the way to Oliver. If you look at the way Mishikau was constructed, there's some space along the south edge of that roadway. And that space is going to be the new home for Arcadia Creek. Arcadia Creek will be an open channel, so we're going to be constructing the channel about 12 times bigger than the current pipe that is currently kind of running under the Allen neighborhood. And then along that canal section, creek and canal section, there'll be a multi-use pathway that's kind of built right into the side of that channel. In local streets, we're doubling the investment in local streets beginning next year. We've got new programs there as well. So there's a program, when I say a program, I'm talking about something that's going to occur year over year over year. So that investment and what that program is is going to change in terms of specific streets, but it's going to still be there year over year over year. So a lot of that work is going to be focused on preventative improvements, which includes sealing, crack sealing, mills and overlays, fog seals, slurry seals, things that are, we're investing in the street early in its lifecycle, but also doing those repairs, those, you know, mill and reservicing as well so that we can continue to prolong that street lifecycle into the future. Retaining walls, this is something that, you know, may go kind of unnoticed, but there's several neighborhoods that have retaining walls that have fallen into disrepair over the years. And so we're going to look to start investing back into that and replacing some of those retaining walls. Streetlights is a program that we're going to be investing in. We've got several streetlight programs happening on Mishikau, on Kalamazoo Ave. Pretty much all the two-way street projects have street lighting incorporated with them. We've done some streetlighting projects on some specific streets around Kalamazoo. We also have a streetlight attrition program. So we're working with Consumers Energy. When a high-pressure sodium lamp goes out, we're going to be replacing that with LED. And that's happening all throughout the city. You've probably already noticed some of that work. And then, last but not least, stormwater. We're making significant improvements in stormwater. We've got some budget recommendations for the city commission, line items as well, which include some staffing and requests of support. Stormwater structure cleaning, where we're going to actually be factoring out every structure in the city over a three-year period. We're also going to be investing in stormwater infrastructure replacement, including green infrastructure, things like storm offlining, and different investments overall. So that work is, will be coming forward next year. In wastewater, we've got a whole bunch of improvements, kind of picking up where we left off. We just completed a $26 million investment in our tertiary process. We're going to keep that program going and kind of holistically investing in the treatment plan itself. There's several projects here identified for that. Working in interceptors, interceptors are those big pipes, like highway systems, where many little pipes connect to. And then those smaller pipes, those street-level pipes we call collector sewers that are on, you know, your street itself. So we've got everything from manhole rehab, pipelining, some trenchless work, that means work that we're able to do to renew the infrastructure without digging big holes. And we also have a pretty big project called the Kalamazoo Sustainable Biosalts Project. This project, we applied for funding last year. The city commission approved a project plan, which provided us kind of that funding application to the state of Michigan. Ultimately, that project was not approved, so we're looking to make some changes to that project to look to some other alternatives within that overall project plan. We just submitted in October, on October 28th, an intent to apply for $145 million assistance from the state of Michigan for the Kalamazoo Sustainable Biosalts Project. So more to come on that. We anticipate bringing an updated project plan to the city commission, probably late spring of 2026, to support that updated application for funding. In water, last year, we crossed the 5,000 lead service line replacement threshold. For us, that's very important, that's a halfway mark. We've got about 10,000 lead services across the entire city. Those have to be out of the ground by state order by 2039. And we're ahead of the, definitely ahead of the curve on that. As of Halloween, we've replaced 6,112 lead services. And we've got another 1,200 services planned to occur in Edison next year as well. So we were in Edison all this year, and we're going to continue to be in Edison all next year. In terms of what have we completed? We have all of East Side completed. We have all of East Wood completed. We have all of Parchment completed. We have all of North Side completed. We have all of West Douglas completed. And we have all of the Westwood neighborhood completed. We also have all of Stewart completed. And we're halfway through Edison. Next year will be completed through Edison. And then we're going to shift our focus to Vine and then south, going into Bronson Boulevard, southwest Westonage, Westonage Hill, some of those areas. Also want to highlight work we're doing at the treatment plants. We've got a lot of work focused on consolidating treatment plants. We've got 13 point-of-entry treatment plants. We're working to consolidate that number down, creating bigger footprints and more treatment at certain locations. You saw, we're underway right now with a $60 million project at Station 5 and Station 14. So we're constructing one treatment plant at the location of Station 5. And we're pumping in the flow from 14 and 5 together to provide that treatment at one footprint. So that provides overall better accuracy and precision of that treatment process, and it cuts down the number of entry points into the system. We're going to continue that project. We've got a 2029, 2030 project we're planning to do at Central. And you may have seen some property purchases come before the Kalamazoo City Commission in relationship to that project. That's all the projects in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to kind of go into details if you see anything on any of those line items that you want to talk about or anything in any one of the big areas. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I did have a question about the lead servicing line replacement. Is there a general era in which a house would or would not have a lead servicing pipe?
Sure, yeah. You know, want to highlight some resources that we have online too. So if you Google City Kalamazoo Lead Services and go to our City Kalamazoo webpage, you'll see that there's several different tabs you can click on. Free testing, a progress map of where we are. And then towards the top of that webpage, there is a service material lookup. So any house, any address in our water system, and we serve 11 municipalities, not just the city of Kalamazoo, you can pull that tab open, it creates, it's like a GIS map, and then you can enter in your address, and it's going to show you what your service material is. And so we've gone out and we've identified what the service material is at every address for every home that we provide service to. Now, there is some records in that that might not be totally accurate, and we understand that. So if it says likely, that means we believe, based on age of construction, that year that the water main went in, what the neighbor is, or what the other, what we found on that street. So we've done a lot of research on this that will provide that material. Broadly speaking, to get back to your specific question, we have found that lead services were installed anywhere from 1869 all the way up through 1949, but not from 1950 forward. We haven't found a file that said, we've stopped installing lead as of 1950. But through our records review and search, we have found that, we have not found an address where that service was installed after 1950 that was lead. Now, understanding that the service line could have been in when, before the home was built, so that's possible, the service line went in when the water main was installed. So trying to understand where you're at on that, we would recommend that you use our online tool to provide that information. So thank you for that, that's certainly a great question. Thank you.
I would quickly pitch in that I'd like to congratulate you. Heck of a job on that infrastructure stuff. Out of sight, out of mind, people don't see that over time, right? It's something underground, but it's been impressive. So, and I'm an infrastructure guy, so.
Thank you for that.
So, no, yeah. And we're not 100% there, but.
No.
One quick follow-up, how confident are you in federal funds these days? General sense?
Sure, sure, that's a great question. So in terms of, I'll go back to our, I'll go back to our slide on major streets. So we talked about our two-way, our Streets for All projects, our Protect Grant. We've got broadly speaking about $100 million of federal investments that we're going to be putting into this. We're totally confident that the work that we've done to obtain these awards continues to stand today. We've just approved a, kind of the next step progress for our Protect Grant. So we're utilizing our partnerships with Michigan Department of Transportation. So all of these federal grants for transportation that we're bringing forward will be brought forward with agreements with the state of Michigan. So we've got existing relationships with MDOT. We've maintained those relationships for years and years and years. We do projects every year through Kalamazoo area transportation study, building on those relationships with MDOT. So we've got kind of a standard practice that has been tried and true and proven. And so we're using that same process. We anticipate that in the probably December to February timeframe, it's still a little wide yet on when we'll be ready to bring construction agreements or grant agreements forward to the city commission for consideration for these projects. And that would be construction agreements with MDOT.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Wondering if there are any projects or if this falls in your purview around tree trimming? Because I know a lot of us have experienced tree limbs falling, power being knocked out, so on and so forth.
Sure, that's certainly a great question. That's, those projects aren't detailed in capital. That work is considered operational. That work is funded within 226, which is, that's a code. And I don't expect everybody to know what a code is, but that's our solid waste fund. So when you look at those bigger budgets that we bring to the city commission, our solid waste fund provides hazardous tree removals and tree trimming programs. We've got several contracts, in fact, we just awarded a contract. We've got two contractors out right now. They're doing some of that tree trimming and tree removal. We also have some new programs we're bringing forward in 2026. So we're looking to get more proactive, just like you talked about with tree trimming. We have a program that's really categorical species tree removal. So we've identified a species of tree that has been more problematic during storm events. That's the silver maple. And so a work plan has been put together within our department to be more proactive, to go out and identify silver maples and to have a, you know, trimming and removal strategy for those trees and replant in those places. So starting in 2026, we're going to be more proactive with those trimmings and then those removals as well in specific trees that have been problematic.
Is that documentation public?
I believe, so we brought a policy forward to the Tree Committee that describes that categorical species removal process. So that, those documents are public and I, you know, would be able to provide those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that does it for our questions. Do we need action on this? Okay, all right. Well, thank you for the update. We really appreciate the information. You know, again, well done on the work and lead servicing updates. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. And with that, I'll bring up item PC 2025-05, the rezoning of, let me get this right, 4301 Stadium Drive from RM15 Residential Multi-Dwelling and RS5 Residential Single-Dwelling to Community Commercial. I will bring up a few procedures, so before we all get started. The planning staff is going to present the application, followed by the applicant themselves. The planning commission may ask questions to staff and the applicant. And following that, we'll open the public hearing and take the comments. Any people here will get a chance to speak. I know people have already started signing in. We will take callers after the people here have spoken. The number is 888-382-9556. Again, 888-382-9556. I was also asked to note, if any folks do need to use our restroom, there's a single restroom on the first floor. And on the third floor, there's also restrooms. Women on the right, men's on the left. All right, so with that, Bobby, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you Chair Patelco. But before we start the hearing, I'm going to have Attorney Bear speak to the group real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Good evening, commissioners. At this time, the commission is going to be considering rezoning of a specific piece of property. This is a matter that doesn't come up too often in front of the commission. And I know we have some new commissioners here. So I just wanted to take a few moments and review some of the procedures and the tasks ahead of the commission in addressing this issue. You're going to be acting as a quasi-judicial body. What does that mean? It's judicial in that you consider the facts presented through testimony, through the documents in the packet, and you make a decision based on those facts. It's quasi-judicial in that you don't have all the powers of a regular judge, such as the judges in the courthouse on Eleanor Street. You are focused on this specific issue and making a decision, which will be a recommendation to make to the city commission, whether to grant this application or deny this application. Your decision must be based upon the facts presented. Think of the Statue of Justice with her blindfold holding the scales and weighing the facts for an impartial decision. That's what you will be doing. You need to set aside any bias you may have against any side to this question and set aside your personal opinions because you're making an impartial decision. Ordinance A83B5 lists the factors to be considered in making this determination. These are factors to be considered. It's not a checklist. The ordinance specifically uses the word factors. Sometimes ordinances, statutes, or even courts will specify certain things and say that they all have to be determined in order to make a decision one way or the other. That is not the case here. You're going to take the facts, you're going to apply them to these factors and determine what weight to give them. and determine what weight to give them. Of those factors, the first one being consistent with the comprehensive plan. The ordinance uses the term comprehensive plan. You will sometimes hear master plan. The city refers to master plan and strategic vision. All talking about the same thing. That is really the most significant, not that the other factors are not significant, but that is perhaps the most significant because zoning classifications have to be consistent with the master plan. So as you're considering a, changing to a CC district for this property, is that consistent with the master plan? Other factors: changed conditions, community need, compatible with surrounding uses. We are considering here all the uses in the CC district and how that fits into the picture of granting or not granting this zoning change. This particular property is under the natural features protection overlay district. So that is, you will consider the impact that has as far as effect on surrounding uses because that is, is a factor. It's something that's going to apply under the Code of Ordinances. And lastly, we have development patterns, whether the extent to which the proposed amendment would result in a logical and orderly development pattern. So with those comments, I will turn this back over to Bobby and we will proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Attorney Bear. Thank you, Chair Patako. And good evening, planning commissioners, and good evening to all the citizens and interested people in the city hall tonight and watching online. So I'm going to give the staff presentation on the request to rezone. The request is to rezone from RM fifteen and RS five to CC. There's two zone districts on this property. And as Charlie said, there is not a proposed removal of the NFP overlay. So I wanted to provide just a high-level background. I won't go into it too much, but I think these are just important points to start before I dig into it. The request was from Stadium Drive One LLC. It's the property owner seeking to rezone the property. At the applicant hosted PPP, Mr. David Rapp introduced himself as an interested buyer in the property in the due diligence phase of a purchase. And one of the due diligence items is to get the building or the property rezoned to the CC zone district. So there's an interested party in the property. There is history to this property. The, the three times that this has come up are, you know, there was comments based on the number of times this has come forward. The zoning ordinance allows a request to come forward at least a year after a decision is made. So there is a right in the, in the ordinance for that. There was an application. It was in twenty nineteen, the application received, but it was in January of twenty twenty. The same parcel was three parcels at that time, and the request was to rezone from the current zoning to CC and remove the NFP overlay. Those were provided an unfavorable recommendation by the planning commission to the city commission. However, the item never advanced to the city commission and it just fizzled. It's gone. An application was provided by the applicant in twenty twenty-three. The exact same request, no removal of the NFP, rezoned it to CC. Public notice was provided, and before the hearing, the applicant chose to withdraw that request. And in twenty twenty-three as well, the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, the department I work for, we led a citywide commercial rezoning. And that was approved, I believe, in October of twenty twenty-three. And in that request, it included, it was aligning the remaining commercial areas to be in line with the future land use map, and that included this parcel. At that time, there was robust public feedback and that parcel was removed in the outreach phase of that consideration and not moved forward. So that, that provides the background on some of the earlier requests or why this request has been in front of this body a few times. So now getting to the property. For a little bit of a visual for the property, what we have in front of us here is a nineteen ninety-seven aerial photograph. I thought it provided a good recent context. We can see the house there on the west side. There used to be an old house there. And I put the elevations on there because I know the NFP consideration is going to be an important one here. And some of the features on this property are the slope, and then the coverage of it would be considered woodlands. I can't say if, I really don't know sitting here if the wetland setbacks, if they're coming close enough from the neighboring property to be impactful to those standards. But on the nearby property, there's wetlands and there could be some on this property as well. So that shows an interesting feature that some people may have heard about. You see that line along the east there. That is the old Fruit Belt Railroad line that used to go through there. And I believe, looking back at it, they probably used a little bit of that hill when they put in one thirty-one because it, it's riding on top of it over there. So it creates this weird ridge right across the property. And then here is the modern aerial photograph. You can see the house has now been removed. This is a twenty twenty-five image, and the entire parcel is tree covered. There's a little bit of a clearing where the house was, where it used to be a yard, but otherwise it is completely tree covered. And what makes this property so unique? This property lies in a transition zone, transition between municipalities, transitions between land uses, and transitions between zoning. So I, I wanted to choose these photos to highlight the two angles of this property, to help highlight the, the intense commercial zoning on this side versus the land use and the zoning on the other side. So just to put us into context there, there are very, very stark differences. Up to the north, you can see the yellow line. We're looking from the south at the property there. Before I move on, any questions? The, that kind of covers the highlight of the scene in the area. Any questions before I go on to the rest of the presentation?
So there's a new applicant. Does he have, does he have anything in mind in terms of what he wants to build? Or is that had not been established yet?
It's not established yet. So moving along to the more typical items in the presentation here, here is our.
Bobby, can I take you back one step?
Sure.
I have a question, and this is sort of the context for our whole discussion here tonight. So the property is zoned residential.
Correct.
Today. I just want to, this is, everybody knows this. So can you explain to me why it has been marketed as a commercial property?
Would I be able to finish my presentation before I address that?
So, so I'm just trying to establish some of the context around it, and that's fine. Sure. Thank you.
The, here's, here, I will touch on that in my criteria. Here's the aerial photo. It's, it's zoomed out more. The blue line in the hatching is the parcel in question. And in reference to the zoning question, here is the city zoning map. To the west or the left of Drake there, it's grayed out. That's Oshkoshmo, so we don't show their zoning. And everything to the right is the city Kalamazoo zoning. It's hard to tell, but all of Stadium there is a pink color for CC, and then further to the north is multifamily residential. So there is the current zoning, and that map didn't have the NFP. So I provided an extra one to show the NFP. The NFP is represented by that hashed line there. So the parcel is NFP, the property to the south, and the property to the east are also NFP. This is a current land use map. A little clarification from some comments I received over, over the course of the noticing. You'll notice the apartment complex is listed as commercial. That is because it is a commercial classification by assessing. We use our, those land use classifications, and they're right like ninety percent of the time. An apartment complex by commercial real estate is often called a commercial property. And I'll save the content neutral sign discussion for another day. And here is the future land use map, which is obviously a big focus of this one. The red there is shown as commercial. The future land use map doesn't have a very broad. It has the live-work zones in commercial, and it highlights this parcel is commercial. So there's the planning and zoning background. This is a rezoning. The applicant utilized our PPP to have a, a public meeting. And how and what does an applicant use to make that decision? Within the PPP, there's a, you know, it's like a Venn diagram grid. And this one was a large-impact, large-geography one. So if it's a small-impact, small geography, you know, maybe you can do postcards. With the large-impact, large-geography, it's a notice and some sort of community event. And they chose to host a public participation meeting at the Anna Witten Hall. That was a week ago yesterday on October thirtieth. I think I counted fifty at one point. Probably a little more than that came and attended. And that's where Mr. Rapp came and answered questions, as well as Emily with him, who filled out the application. And there's a photo from, from the event and the mailer that was sent out to properties within three hundred feet and to the ODWA. And then the last thing I'll add is, you know, in the staff report and the, the research for this, I looked into the plans of the agencies and the groups in and around it as well because Winchell has a neighborhood plan that speaks to this property. It is flanked on all sides by, well, the west and the south by Western Michigan property and the Preserve. So I referenced what their master plans call for in the vicinity. And I even went and checked MDOT because of the large highway there having an impact. But nothing coming over there, so it's in great shape. And before I go into the criteria, I'm just going to give some photos here to help us contextualize the, the site. All these photos are, are from the street, and I did have an opportunity to walk the property as well to get that additional context. So this is looking from Drake Road where the house used to be. You can kind of tell it's gone. There's nothing left there. Maybe a little bit of driving, driveway. From the same location, this is looking to the right or south down Drake on your left there. Kind of show it going down off to the BTR Park. And the other view there is standing at the corner, looking back towards the one thirty-one Stadium Drive interchange. And then to capture the front of the property, this is from the shopping center across the street. Was able to have a great lunch at one of our local restaurants there. And I got these great photos of, here's looking to the east from about the center of the site. And you can see the land there. And then here is a view from the same perspective. The other way was west. This way is east, looking back towards the city at the other side of the property. And that light there services the shopping center and the apartment complexes over there as well. So that provides all the context and the background. And now for the, the review decision criteria, I'm going to go ahead and read these in full. They are a mirror of the same ones in, in your staff report. And I'll read through all of them and then, then go to questions. All right. The first criteria is the extent to which the amendment is consistent with the master plan twenty twenty-five in the strategic vision. The proposed rezoning request is consistent with the master plan and strategic vision of the city of Kalamazoo. The future land use plan and the twenty twenty-five master plan describes the property as commercial with natural features protection. The existing residential zoning, primarily RS five, are those that permit a very narrow range of uses, specifically supporting single-family homes on individual lots. The proposed zone promotes a much broader range of uses, including low-impact and high-intensity commercial uses, including the opportunity for a mix of users that include residential. Those standards permit a broad range of options, and together with the NFPO district, natural feature protection overlay, are consistent with the NFPO and aligns the proposed zoning with the future land use map in the twenty twenty-five master plan. The Winchell Neighborhood Plan also discusses the future development of this parcel, emphasizing low-impact design, green design, and the existing natural features. CC zoning, along with the NFPO district, NFPO district is not in conflict with this designation. A lower-impact design, green design, and working with the existing natural features are all possible with this designation. The CC zoning designation standards are very flexible, which could make alignment with the NFPO standards easier. Two, the extent to which there's changed conditions that require an amendment. There are changed conditions to this property and surrounding vicinity, which warrants a request to rezone to commercial as shown on the twenty twenty-five Imagine Kalamazoo Future Land Use Map. The master plan prioritizes alignment between streets and adjacent uses. The majority of Stadium Drive frontage in this vicinity is auto-oriented, reflective of the high-speed, high-volume suburban corridor, that is Stadium Drive. The property also sits along two bus routes of K Metro, which experience steady ridership numbers at the surrounding and adjacent bus stops. The automobile and transit volumes provide ability to serve as higher-capacity uses than the existing residential zoning. Continuing this, the urbanization since the adoption of the twenty twenty-five Kalamazoo Master Plan accurately predicted the growth and changing land use pressures on the west side of the city and the impact on land uses. Beyond the city limits, the BTR Park managed by Western Michigan has expanded. The new development has steadily increased along the Drake Road corridor, both in the city of Kalamazoo and the township of Oshkoshmo. The CC designation, the CC zone district, which now permits residential uses by right, could be developed consistent with the master plan vision, while the current zoning of residential would permit by right only low-impact or single-family residential uses, which do not align with the context of the corridor and surrounding streets of Stadium Drive and Drake Road. The intersection of Drake Road and Stadium Drive varies from some of the other, varies from other intersections such as Parkview and Oakland and the East Cork and Portage Street, which serve adjacent neighborhoods at a scale and use appropriate to neighborhood-level scale. With adjacent residential areas closely connected to the intersecting streets, walkability, and the potential to serve daily and community needs. This intersection is a regional crossing, served by high-speed traffic, multiple transit lanes, and limited and dense adjacent residential areas, highlighting the alignment of CC as the most appropriate zone of the commercial zones in the zoning district. The extent to which the proposed amendment addresses a community need. The parcel is located at one of the busiest intersections of the city on Stadium Drive, a fast-auto-oriented commercial corridor. There are not many large undeveloped parcels in the city, and fewer are located as this one is. The CC district allows for a wide range of commercial uses and mixed uses, which are appropriate for the Stadium Drive corridor. The NFPO district serves to support development of any type while supporting the preservation and enhancement of a site's natural features. Protecting the features with sustainable and equitable development are community goals outlined in the strategic vision. Under the current zoning, only residential uses such as houses, limited duplexes, sports and recreation uses, and other low-impact uses are permitted. If zone CC, the protection to the natural features are still in place, and the zone district permits higher density, which is supported by the available road capacity and transit in the area where the infrastructure exists. The ability to permit the uses and density along the frontage supports the long-term needs of the community outlined in the strategic vision. The compatibility with surrounding land uses. The proposed rezoning is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject land. Per the zoning ordinance, the RS districts are intended to accommodate the development of primarily single-family dwelling units on individual lots and promote owner-occupied housing. This land is not compatible with the surrounding land uses, which include multifamily housing, large-scale retail, and restaurant uses or the adjacent streets. Both as the streets function, as they function today, as they are designated in the master plan. Both of these streets function today as they are designated in the master plan, referencing the street type in the street design manual. To the west, the land in Oshkoshmo Township is zoned for business use and owned by Western Michigan University, being that little strip between the highway interchange. Continuing the compatibility surrounding land uses, the existing zoning designation of NFPO is intended to guide site development, balancing growth and redevelopment with protection of our natural features. The language and standards of the NFP ordinance demonstrate the good governance application of the strategic vision, demonstrating the community's ability to guide, manage, and ensure the development standards are implemented feasibly and with the increased intensity and range of uses that the CC zone would, can permit. Would permit. The standards as they exist provide regulatory review and standards to ensure practical protection of natural features on and near the property, which can permit the density and uses in a way that also preserves natural features. The CC zone district supports compatible development with the Stadium Drive land use and development. The NFPO zone district. The NFPO Zone District supports the existing natural features and the adjacent Asylum Lake Preserve. These districts work together to support the dual contexts of this property. And the last item of consideration for the planning commission is to the extent to which the proposed amendment would retain in a logical and orderly development pattern. The rezoning of this parcel, as requested, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern. The development pattern of Stadium Drive is auto-oriented, commercial, and a fast, highly-traveled street. CC Zone District supports the continuation of this pattern. Any development on this site would be governed by both the CC District standards, which allow for maximum flexibility, zero setback, and increased density with the protections of the NFPO Zone District standards. CC and the NFPO Zone Districts would strike a balance to create a flexible, market-driven approach to the property while keeping the existing natural features and adjacent preserve in mind. That is the conclusion of my staff report. I'm available. Any questions?
Thank you.
But the applicant as well has a presentation.
All right. Do we have questions for Bobby first?
Bobby, could you go into a little bit about the proposed land use and the strategic vision, how, when, why that was determined? And because I'd like to know a little more about how it was determined that this site was slated for commercial use despite whatever it may be zoned as.
I, I don't have any more information than the future land use map. Through that process, it became this way.
That was through the 2025 master plan?
Yep. I was employed during that time, but that detail, I could certainly look into it. I do not know.
Okay.
I think, I believe you cited the Winchell neighborhood plan. So I was going to read from there a little bit and kind of ask a follow-up question. Page 15, for anyone interested. Development along the Stadium Drive corridor should be guided by the natural features of the land. Here, businesses that do not require high visibility to attract customers such as professional offices. Pumping-only services or similar are ideal to better blend into the surroundings. So buildings, buildings can be set back as needed to respect the natural setting. Shared driveway access parking and other amenities will minimize the impact of development. Uses should not generate excessive traffic, noxious odors, or noise. Nighttime lighting should be minimal and security, security oriented. Is that something that, is that a suggestion or more of a, an expectation or a rule that you have in place for once he's ready to build and seeking approval for that?
Great. Great question. The, the zoning ordinance is ultimately the, the decision on the land today. And a master plan is an aspirational document, something to work towards. And similarly, as an addendum to the master plan, you know, it is an aspirational document as well. In the context of the rezoning, a CC Zone District absolutely 100% would support a development of that scale. However, a CC Zone District could support other uses too.
Follow-up question. What's, what's the approval process look like if the, this goes through, the land is purchased and he wants to build? Does he have to seek permission to build one for it? Or can he just build whatever he wants?
The, all of the uses permitted in the use table of the CC Zone District be permitted, and there's special uses permitted there as well. To answer your question, what does review look like for a property in the CC Zone District in the NFPA overlay? It would require site plan review, which is a staff review body that you guys delegate that authority to. And it would have to go in front of the Natural Feature Protection Review Committee because it is the NFP. A site plan review, while administrative, is required to get NFP approval. So a development would have at minimum site plan review and a natural feature protection review committee approval.
Thank you.
Could you just explain for us what the natural feature protection overlay actually does, how, how things are built differently as a result of that?
Yes, great question. I'm probably going to mess it up a little bit, but when NFP was created, it was, NFP isn't no development, it's thoughtful development. So my elevator speech is, everybody knows that a house or a building has setbacks. We can all kind of generally understand that, a windmill or something. The natural feature protection creates those same standards, but for items in the natural world, setbacks, distances, requirements, where in most zoning code, it's very construction-oriented. And we have a set of series of features that are protected by development standards in that ordinance. Those are trees, woodlands, water bodies, swamps, wetlands. Let's see, slopes? And I think I'm forgetting another one. Anyways, with these features, this site has woodland and it has slopes. So with woodland, you can remove a percentage of the woods based off of the acreage of the property. With slopes on the site, there's a setback and do not disturb, basically provision. The equal distance from the height of the slope, slopes at 20% or more greater slope. So I see the 20% or greater slopes along the southern edge of the property and along that railroad line. And the whole property is woodland.
So how is that NFP enforced? Like who is reviewing that they're following all these procedures?
The site plan review committee and a lot of staff that I work with and supervise.
Bobby, back to me for a second. And you may not be, I do want to do the follow-up on the marketing of it, but I'm just curious.
Yep.
I did, I was at the property today also, did a big walkabout and, you know, but a little bit of analogous context here. On the one hand, we want to serve the master plan. The master plan, and tell me if I'm wrong at any step here, is that the master plan is not our legally binding obligation. It's to the zoning, correct?
For the property today, yes.
Yeah.
The, the things that apply on it, yes.
And I know this is redundant for everyone, but I want to get to this point of, how much of Kalamazoo is spot-zoned right now that's in violation of the master plan?
That is a fantastic question.
Well, thank you. I, thanks for thought about it. Because I know many of these places.
Yeah.
But do we have a database of the?
Oh, I could reference when I was zoning inspector, but I'll let Christine answer it.
Yeah, sure. Hi, Chris.
So, hi. Christina Anderson, I'm a city planner, deputy director of community planning and economic development. Since the approval of the 2025 master plan, staff has worked in small pieces to update the zoning standards and the map following the future land use plan. So so far, we have updated downtown. We've updated all of the commercial districts, all the corridors in town. And what's left are the residential districts. We still need to update those. And we need to update the manufacturing. Through that work, we aligned the zoning code with the future land use plan.
Sure.
So that has been the work that we have been doing. I can't tell you an exact number of parcels. What I can tell you is that as we brought forth to this board, changes to the zoning map and the zoning standards, we use the future land use plan as our guide in that work.
Sure. Quick follow-up, if I may. To what extent do we want to bring every property in our city in compliance with the master plan?
So I think the master plan is our guiding document.
Correct.
Right? And so we, the goal, and the state tells us that our zoning code should align with the master plan.
Sure.
Right? So that's how we have been moving forward. Of course, all of our zoning work is done through a public process. This document was created through a public process. So I think Commissioner Curtis or Wilson, I apologize, I couldn't see, asked how we got to this, this point in time. You know, staff worked up a, after engaging with the community, a future land use plan. And that was reviewed by the community with the document and ultimately approved by this body and the city commission. So I just wanted to answer that question for you.
I'm sorry, I'll do one more shot at this. I know it's redundant, but I want to have my own clarity on this, is we do not have a database right now of how many spot zonings are in violation of a master plan, correct?
So I want to make sure that we're using the right terminology.
Go ahead.
So spot zoning is when you have a parcel that is zoned something that is incongruent with everything around it, right? It's a one random one. That is different than a future land use designation. So we need to separate those two.
Understood.
Future land use plan is not spot zoning, right? Because it's not zoning. It's future land use designation. As these parcels change, this is how we'd like them to change.
Sure.
We do not have a list. What we've, again, what we've been doing for the last eight years is working to align the future land use, the zoning map with the future land use plan.
Understood. Thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah, another one. So do you have examples of other areas in the community that are zoned as CC and have that NFP overlay? Just as examples of how this has been done before?
I can think of some projects, but I'm trying to think of a CC one. One I can think of is the Gage Cannabis Dispensary on Stadium Drive. It's setback from the road and it's a deep property that backs up to a residential area where the rear of that property was woodland that was protected. And it has additional stormwater capacity. At the rear of the property is a real tall retaining wall. And they, in the NFP, you have to hold more water than is typically required by our ordinance. So there's a bigger pond back there. That's a CC project, at least one I can think of right now.
Yeah, so the future land use for this site is marked for heavy commercial. Does it also include the natural features protection overlay?
Yes, it does. The NFP overlay did not exist at the time of the master plan and it does show it along the property, along the southern half.
Okay, so in the, the future land use plan, what would the sort of mode of redress be, say, in pursuit of developing high-intensity commercial developments on this site? There is an accident or a misunderstanding and all the trees get cut down and everything gets messed up. Is there a fine? What's the redress for if this does get violated and the NFPO is ignored?
It would be a zoning ordinance violation, which we have a zoning administrator and code enforcement staff. So it would, something like that would probably be a stop or quarter right there immediately, followed up by enforcement notices, which could lead to a civil infraction or, you know, a judge making a decision.
Assuming all the NFP is followed and there's no infractions, given the protection of the slopes and the setbacks therein, how much of the parcel do you think is developable versus how much do you think is sort of out of bounds there for us? The slopes would be my primary concern.
I don't know.
Okay.
My question sort of like, in the same vein, is you said it's a setback from within 20% grade. To best of your knowledge, the north boundary coming down from Stadium Drive, that does not meet 20% grade as it currently stands, where they wouldn't have to, essentially, I'm looking at like, would any development even be able to have an entrance off of Stadium Drive if that slope would have to be maintained?
That is a great observation. I missed that one along the north. So it is a slope of 20%. Standing here right now, I don't believe, I can't recall if the ordinance makes a difference between human-made and natural slope. So those are reasons I can't spitball numbers.
Just to add, the, what you're asking are very detailed design questions that are site plan related, right? So when someone is coming before this board, they're asking you to determine if this district is appropriate. So details about all the natural features, the extent of the natural features, for example, on this property, we would not necessarily know at this time. That level of diligence is done with site development. So we know some generalities. We know that there are woodlands on the property. We know from aerials that there are some protected slopes on the property. When someone goes to actually develop a property with NFP, they then need to go through and do much more detailed analysis to understand exactly what is the boundary of that woodland? You know, are, you know, what are the, what are the slopes? Where are they located? You know, we are looking at, you know, publicly available topography maps, which are pretty good, but you know, when someone goes to develop, they have to get that next level of detail. So that is, it's not, there's just not something that we would have in front of us at this time. But know that that is something that would be investigated prior to site design and prior to coming forward for the next steps or levels of development that happen if it is determined that community commercial is the appropriate zone district.
That makes a lot of sense. And I know it's early in the process where you're not in site plan review. I'm just trying to establish for stuff where we're looking at like influence on traffic patterns and relationship to neighboring uses and zonings and that sort of thing, the degree to which we should consider, would this parcel behave like it is across the street or would it behave like it is off of Drake Road? It's hard to say at this point, but that's one kind of way.
Right. That's a good question. Totally understand. The zoning code always has relief valves associated with it. So we can't not allow property to be accessed, right? And so when they get to a level of design on this property, or any property that has NFP on it, you know, the, the NFP board, the zoning board, and staff, there's multiple layers here, will have to weigh, you know, where's the, where's the place for access? And what does that look like in relationship to natural features? And if we were going to give, you know, if relief were going to be given somewhere on the property, perhaps that's where it would go because you need to be able to allow access to a property. You know, that is, if it's going to be used, it's got to be accessed somehow. And so those are some of the decisions that we make.
Sorry, so does that mean there would potentially be like a waiver or something if they had to, in order to grant access to the property, that would kind of override the NFP limitations?
The NFP is in the zoning code. The zoning code's relief valve is that you can request a variance through the zoning board of appeals. Now, any property that's zoned NFP, they don't just go to the zoning board of appeals like a standard property would. They also have to get reviewed by the NFP board. So it's, it's a double process.
Okay.
And I'm just, you know, we're just, again, we don't have the level of detail to talk about that. That would come once they start, 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 start site design. You don't generally enter that phase until you know that that's a possibility. And so that's why it's set up to say first, is the district and the set of uses associated with that district appropriate or not? A step one.
Thank you, Christina.
All right. If we have no more questions, we'd like to hear from the applicant.
Should go when you click it. Yep, you just hit that. That was perfect.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Emily Palacios. I represent the, the landowner. And with me is David Rapp. He is the contract purchaser who is in his, his due diligence with respect to this property. He and I are going to split our time and try to be brief because the staff gave you a really excellent, detailed report on our request and, and how it fits with the city of Kalamazoo's comprehensive plan policies and goals, along with the plan's projections for, for future land use. A couple of things I just want to highlight is that while this property is challenging given its natural features, we recognize that, it is 18.8 acres. And so there is a considerable amount of land that we are working here. The existing zoning pattern is unworkable. The multiple-family residential is a narrow strip across the stadium frontage. The balance is single-family residential, which in addition to there being no market demand for that type of use at this location, I would suggest that that kind of land use would have a greater potential to harm the preserve than well-managed, well-engineered, modern, commercial development. Because you don't control the types of pesticides and herbicides and other ways in which private property owners manage their single-family residences. So with a commercial use, which is much more highly regulated, I think the city has a the preserve the special place that it is. The property is being marketed by Kalender Commercial and has been for a period of time. You've seen their signs on the property. I've spoken with the broker and he has reported that he has received consistent interest in commercial opportunities at this site over the years that he's been marking it. But each time the zoning question comes up and it's not properly zoned, applicant perspectives begin, immediately lose interest because this is a difficult process and people don't want to put a tremendous amount of time and money into developing detailed plans for something that's going to get shot down at the zoning phase. He reports, as I indicated, no interest in residential development at this location. And in fact, I think the staff very wisely pointed out how difficult a residential neighborhood in this area would be, given the heavy traffic infrastructure in and around this parcel. The broker reported to me today that the Class A retail vacancy rate is less than 5% in this area, which indicates room for the market to expand. In his view, Stadium and Drake has become the most desirable retail sales area in the county, overtaking the Millam and Southwestonage areas. I just want to remind the commission that the request here is for the CC zoning with the natural features protection overlay remaining in place. We are prepared to work with that, that district and figure out what can be done with the site respecting those, those rules. I just want to close by sharing a couple of slides. There's, I've, I've said that there's no demand for residential development on this parcel, which is what the zoning allows. We do see demand for commercial development. My client has been unable to do anything with the property in the time that he has owned it, but others have made use of his property while he has owned it. These pictures that I'm about to share are of a camp that was established on the property in 2023. This is the condition that the property was left after the, the trespassers were removed by, by the city. And then my client instructed to clean up the property. Of course, that's appropriate, but what was left on the property were a variety of environmental wastes that took five people an entire month to remove from the property. One of the reasons we are so committed to trying to see this property rezoned is so that it can be developed and managed in a way that these are not the things that are happening on this beautiful piece of property next to the Asylum Lake Preserve.
All right, folks, if we could just keep the voices down, please. Please. We'd like to hear from the applicant, folks. We'll have a chance to speak when it's their turn.
Sure. I'll be very brief. My name's Dave Rapp. I am the applicant. I'm under contract to purchase the property. I am just really starting the process right now and I'm working through the rezoning. So just a little quick background on me, I'm based in Grand Rapids. I have been involved in developing properties kind of throughout West Michigan for 25 plus minus years, different types of projects, from residential projects to industrial projects, you name it. Been involved in projects like this that are complicated. You know, at this point, we, we need to seek rezoning of the property to see if we can get it rezoned to commercial because without that, there's not, as Emily expressed and the planning department, that we can't do a whole lot until we have that information. This site is certainly, you know, a complicated site. There's a lot of topography. There's a lot of emotion around the southern edge of it. There's an overlay. There's, you know, traffic, curb cuts, things that we're going to have to deal with along the way. But before we can even start addressing those issues and talking about what types of tenants would go there, we need to first seek the, the rezoning to commercial.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Thank you. I've got a question. In terms of your portfolio, could you break it down for us by percentage, percentage wise, you have XYZ business, number of businesses or?
Types of product?
Yeah.
It's a wide range. I would say it's more industrial and land related than retail, but do a lot of more specific site related stuff for retail users, more standalone retail uses, not, a lot less strip centers, a lot more user driven developments.
Okay. Have you ever done any projects, maybe not NFP related, but built in sensitive areas where you had to kind of work around these kinds of situations before?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have specific examples of it, but I think that there's, you know, every project you, you get involved in, there's, there's always something that you have to address sensitivity wise. So definitely when we work through projects, we're addressing the concerns of the, the people as best as we can to.
So I'm curious why you selected the CC zoning criteria versus other zoning commercial districts that might have been available to you? Was that driven by the future land use map? Are there specific things that you have in mind that necessitate that zoning district?
Yeah, that the zoning district selection was that of the, the property owner, which is why I'm asking it. But no, the, the property owner is seeking the CC zoning because it is the district that fits best with the master plan recommendation.
So the property owner, the property owner is seeking that designation. How will he be involved once the sale is complete to Mr. Rapp here, if at all?
The property owner had to sign the rezoning application and if for some reason Mr. Rapp's due diligence is not favorable, Mr. Taurani will still own the property. And so we, we are very much hoping that this process moves forward in the way in which we are, are laying it out, but it would be Mr. Taurani's interest to have the property rezoned CC irrespective of, you know, what happens with this particular transaction.
So just to clarify, if something goes wrong with your due diligence process and you don't want to purchase this land, it'll just revert back to Mr. Taurani?
Correct.
Correct. Mr. Taurani would continue to, to own it.
Could you give us an overview of what that due diligence process looks like? What, what could go wrong after, say, if approval goes through tonight? What may go wrong on your end to kind of result in that happening?
I just showed you pictures of a tremendous amount of environmental waste on that property and Mr. Rapp is going to be investigating that environmental waste and determining whether or not it is left a condition that he can work around or he's going to have to spend a whole bunch of money remediating beyond the work that's already been done. So there's, there's questions like that that come up through due, due diligence that influence a prospective purchaser's decision whether to proceed with the transaction or not. We are, we are hopeful, however.
Thank you.
In your estimation, Mr. Rapp, we asked it to Bobby, but would you, do you have an estimate of how much of this land is developable?
Yeah, you know, if I were to make a guesstimate right now, I would say half. I would say there's nine-ish acres that's probably developable. I mean, there's, there's some significant topography and there's some things that are going to not be developed just based on the topography. So, and from a retail perspective and a, and a commercial development perspective, most of those uses want to be up, up along the road. So, you know, the depth is not as important as the road frontage.
The road being Stadium or Drake?
Stadium.
It made this a difficult question, but I have to ask it, you know, in the spirit of transparency and accountability, do you have any intention on turning the proper, property over if you receive this request?
What would you mean by turn it over?
Sell it.
It's a large piece of property. It may not remain owned by a single, single owner, depending on how the development lays out.
Just a question of intentionality. You may not know, maybe you do know, but.
I, I certainly could see some users wanting to own the real, portions of the real estate rather than lease it. So I certainly see that there's some uses that will want to own, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, it's now time to open the public hearing. So I'd like to make a, oh, Bobby, do you have a thing before I? Okay. So I'd like to make a few suggestions just to make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak and is heard. For the folks in the audience, we ask that you please be respectful of the speakers. I'd ask you to sort of refrain from clapping and cheering, even if you support it. Snaps, jazz hands, as it worked well in the past, but it allows the speaker to continue speaking without interrupting them and, and cutting into their time. And all those present will have a chance to speak or we will again take call-ins at So for those waiting to speak, yeah, if you could, as we've already done, line up the windows in the back. Please sign at the clipboard before you start speaking. And then when it's your turn, if you could state your name and you can state your address, people have done that in the past. There is a three minute time limit and after that, the microphone will automatically turn off. So the, and the planning commission will not be answering questions. This is your opportunity to make your voice heard. Pardon?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering, do we have any planned breaks? As a 72-year-old guy, I'm just asking.
Once again, if you could, if you could, if you could just wait a second?
I, oh, you already have that.
I, I have a list.
I will, I will wait.
All right. So please speak only once so that everyone who wants to has a chance to come up and have the opportunity. If comment time goes for a while, we will take a break, maybe more than one, but everyone will have a chance to speak. So if you're coming up and I wave you down, it's not because I don't want to hear you, we're going to need some breaks potentially. And folks, if you could, you can tell me to, if I, if I miss a window, just, just lean forward and say it's time for a break. It's okay. So again, as we've heard from the staff and the applicant, issue in front of us tonight is a general rezoning from single family residential and multi-family to community commercial and all the potential uses that go along with that. I know there's been a lot of discussion about the car wash or whatnot, but that is not the current issue tonight. Beyond that, vehicle services are one of the permitted uses in community commercial, though it does require a special use permit to do that. Any kind of vehicle services aren't necessarily allowed by Rite. So in general, we're speaking about commercial rezoning and there, but hopefully we've kind of all heard, heard our talking points.
Chair Patelco for housekeeping, I guess. Yeah, perfect. Everybody's lining up, but I just wanted to let people know in the community room, as this line starts down, if they're not already in line, we will go to the community room in the hall room and make sure that every space where there's people outside of this room have a chance to speak. And if you could, one more time, read the phone call call-in and maybe reference that we will, you don't need to call in while in person, you know, a little, as these start to wind down, then we will open up the phone call comments.
Right.
You'll be sitting on hold until, is how it works on the phone call.
All right. So again, the phone number is 888-382-9556. And for anybody sort of sitting out in the hall, we can definitely hear the noise. So again, if everyone can kind of be quiet so that the speakers have their opportunity to have their voices heard, even if you support them, again, if you show your support in various ways, that allows them to keep talking uninterrupted. All right. And so with that, we'll take our first speaker.
Just a question, how we can change the national area?
So like I said before, we're not going to be taking any questions tonight. If you've got a comment you want to make, you can go ahead and make it, but we're not going to answer questions.
The last time we did this, it was put a national area and that's all I have to say. And I sent a man email to the state this morning. Thank you.
My name is Doc Tael Stevens. I live at 213 Elm Street, Kalamazoo. In 1993, when I was a WMU student, I wrote this book about Asylum Lake to stop the industrial park from being built there. But also that year, I wrote a second book, which was about recycling abandoned contaminated properties because I felt like when it comes to recycling, land is the most important thing we need to reuse. I'm a little surprised that 32 years later, I'm still talking about the same thing. But when I did a check last week, looking at the listings for commercial properties in Kalamazoo County. Sorry, I have to find my place here. There are 46 commercial properties for sale and 38 commercial properties for rent. When we asked the question, does it rezoning this property meet a community need? I don't believe it does. I believe we have plenty of commercial properties available for either development or redevelopment or rent. When we asked at the PPP meeting last week, we asked Mr. Rapp, what is the community need that you are meeting? He said, he admitted to us, it's not about a need, it's about the value of the land. Well, I think the people here are, are here today to tell you that we value the natural properties of the land adjacent to, to the Stadium Drive property. And that wasn't really mentioned in their application when they talked about compatible property use. They talked about the commercial property across the street, but they didn't talk about the large acreage to the south. And I will hope that you will consider that when you deny this zoning request. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Insanity can be defined as attempting the same thing over and over again, but expecting different results. I find the fact that we are here for a third time to be defined as insane. How have we had? By now, we've all heard the potential dangers of having some large developmental property on this plot of land. But the other points are that the entire area around there is already heavily developed and still has potential room to grow in other developments. Not only that, but that specific intersection at Drake and Stadium is consistently ranked annually as one of the most dangerous intersections in our city, having an average of 30 recorded car accidents every year. Every time that Asylum Lake has been threatened or damaged, we as a community have rushed to help it, whether it was runoff from the construction of the medical facility on Drake, beavers getting a little too happy and chopping down too many trees, or the ever ongoing war against garlic mustard. We have banded together to protect this property. Building on that plot adjacent to it is another continuous threat, regardless of what the current owner may claim in terms of protection. How do I know this? He has gone on record as showing, as saying that he has ways in place of making sure that no runoff from his facilities or any other facility built there will contaminate the area. Okay, put a pin in that. There's still the issue of the noise and light pollution that large industrial facilities or business facilities can produce, which have an equal amount of effect on surrounding environments. Numerous organizations such as the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, the U.S. Federal Wildlife Commission, and even NASA have gone on record as showing and proving that excess light and noise can have harmful effects to neighboring ecosystems and animals, be it difficulty finding food, communication, disruption of habitat, and death. I do not trust any person that says something is guaranteed 100%. Something's what's said about a very certain ship and I think we all know how that story ended. I trust even less an organization or a business owner whose organization brings in millions annually, yet still is not able to properly mic participants in a commercial and whose group greenlit a spokesperson that can only be described as a dollar store colonial dandy. Thank you.
Hello. I have lived by Asylum Lake my entire life. I remember my late brother making a documentary, trying to save it from becoming a golf course when that was the danger. I remember the other meetings. It holds a very important spot in my heart and I attended the Thursday meeting last Thursday. And I have to say, I was not impressed. When addressed about the environmental questions of these land, you know, protection. When addressed about the environmental questions of these land, you know, protections, we asked about water contamination, runoff, they did not have answers. When asked about his plan for what he wanted to do, he did not have answers other than if I build it, they will come kind of ideas. If I have this land, there will be interest, then I will build it however they want it. He didn't think there was going to be a car wash, but he couldn't tell us what it would be. When asked what he had built in the past, he blurts out that he has done data centers. We ask, are you going to put a data center here? He says, no. However, anyone who is environmentally conscious, who understands the kind of land this is, would never build a data center. They are extremely ecologically harmful, and anyone with the moral level to invest in that is not someone I want investing near my asylum lake. Asylum Lake is important. It is a very dangerous corner, and we just don't need more retail crap there. We want safety. We want good, no light pollution. And to be honest, being on that corner, I apologize, um, it just doesn't make sense. As for the pictures of homeless people, that's like saying we shouldn't have any natural areas. Homelessness is a problem in Kalamazoo. It's another thing that we need to address in other areas. However, because it exists and because a problem can exist, it's not a reason to devastate a property that once cut into, once destroyed, cannot be repaired. Thank you.
Good evening, chair and commissioners. I'm Stephanie Watkins. I live at twenty-two forty-six Tipperary, and I am president of the Oakland Drive Winchell Neighborhood Association. The parcel in question is located in our neighborhood. We've already submitted a written statement, but on, on behalf of our residents, but I'm also verbally asking you to deny the application to rezone forty-three oh-one Stadium Drive to community commercial. Our request is grounded in the city's own rezoning standards. First, consistency with the comprehensive plan. The applicant leans on the future land use map designation of commercial, but that single map does not select the appropriate district or intensity. The broader plan elevates complete neighborhoods and environmental responsibility. This parcel is unique. It shares a boundary with the Stadium Drive Apartments and the Asylum Lake Preserve. CC zoning would invite high-intensity activity, lighting, noise, traffic, and pervious surfaces immediately adjacent to homes and sensitive natural systems that benefit the entire city. Second, change conditions. A comparable CC request for this site was denied in twenty-twenty. Conditions have not materially changed. The split zoning is self-created through a combination of parcels with different zoning. That circumstance does not require CC. Third, community need. The application does not, does not identify a specific public need. Along Stadium Drive, there are already vacant commercial properties. Meanwhile, Stadium and Drake intersection is among the, one of the most dangerous and hazardous in Kalamazoo. Intensifying commercial use at this location compounds strain without delivering a clear benefit. Fourth, compatibility. The only adjacent partial, parcels are a residential complex and a nature preserve. Neither of those properties allow for high-intensity commercial development, and CC uses immediately adjacent to them do not maintain or improve compatibility there. Fifth, logical development patterns. There's no logic or orderly development pattern in placing high-intensity uses directly adjacent to a residential apartment complex and a nature preserve. CC uses would fragment the corridor's transition pattern, placing a commercial enclave where a buffer is warranted. Beyond code criteria, please consider the lived experience. Asylum Lake Preserve is a regional asset providing recreation, education, and ecological services. Tree removal, large parking lots, and more runoff will degrade that asset. Once lost, those functions are costly and often impossible to restore. For these reasons, the proposal fails the factors for rezoning in the city's zoning code. The prudent, policy-consistent decision is to recommend denial. Thank you for your thoughtful attention and your service.
My name is Tiffany Schreiber, two four two three LeMond Drive, and I am here on behalf of the Asylum Lake Policy and Management Council, or ALPMC, to respectfully but firmly oppose the proposed rezoning of forty-three zero-one Stadium Drive to community commercial as previously submitted to the commission. The parcel at issue lies directly adjacent to Asylum Lake Preserve, one of Kalamazoo's most important natural and educational resources. The Asylum Lake Preserve is protected by a declaration of conservation restrictions whose first purpose is to promote ecosystem integrity and natural aesthetics. The proposed rezoning conflicts with that purpose. It also conflicts with the management framework, which directs that special attention be given to water quality in Asylum Lake and protection to Asylum Lake watershed, the watershed that also supports Little Asylum Lake, Cherry Creek, Willow Lake, Lim Kim Lake, Lake Helen Brook. ALPMC has worked for years to protect this ecosystem. Recently, we completed a major storm water treatment system and chloride removal research project funded by a five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar State of Michigan grant and two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars from our endowment at the Kalamazoo Foundation. These projects were designed to improve the water quality and resilience of Asylum Lake, giving existing storm water flows. A high-intensity commercial development at Stadium Drive parcel would threaten to overwhelm those various systems, both by dramatically changing runoff and by adding traffic and related pollutants to storm water beyond what the new systems were designed to handle. Kalamazoo's own guidelines for zoning map changes require convincing documentation that a rezoning will serve the public's interests, fit its surroundings, and avoid harm to neighborhood character. The proposal fails all of these relevant standards. It also contradicts the intent of the city's Natural Features Protection Overlay District, which was created to help safeguard wetlands, trees, water resources, and habitats, precisely the features that Asylum Lake Preserve was established to protect. Rezoning to community commercial use would invite the possibility of gas station car washers, large parking areas perched above the preserve. That would mean more light, more noise, more road salt, and chemical runoff and fewer species. There would be permanent losses of habitat and biodiversity and a diminished experience for everyone who visits the preserve to learn, reflect, or simply enjoy nature. For all these reasons, the Asylum Lake Policy and Management Council urges you to reject the proposed rezoning of forty-three zero-one Stadium Drive. Protecting this property from inappropriate commercial development is essential to preserving the environmental integrity.
My name is Christopher Bovid, and I'm the president of the Woods Lake Association, a nonprofit dedicated to caring for and protecting Woods Lake in Kalamazoo. I'm here on behalf of our association to urge you to recommend denial of the rezoning request for four-three oh-one Stadium Drive. Our association offers a unique and highly relevant perspective in that we have experienced firsthand the harms that high-intensity commercial uses allowed under CC zoning can inflict on a Kalamazoo Lake ecosystem and the land around it. The area surrounding Woods Lake has endured decades of contamination and environmental damage from intense commercial uses, including a fuel leak from a gas station's underground storage tank, groundwater and soil contamination from a former dry cleaning facility, blowing trash and salt, and contaminated storm water from parking lots and roadways. Even with our continuous efforts to protect and remediate the lake, these pollutants from intense commercial uses still threaten the water quality, aquatic life, and public health. We have, we live every day with the consequences of those past zoning decisions, and we don't want to see the same harms repeated at Asylum Lake. The parcel at issue is uniquely sensitive compared to the others on Stadium Drive in that it shares property lines not with commercial properties, but rather with a nature preserve and residential housing. That combination calls for low-intensity zoning, not the most intense commercial zoning district we have in the city. Kalamazoo's own comprehensive plan and strategic vision emphasize environmental responsibility, healthy neighborhoods, and the preservation of open space. Recommending CC zoning here would directly contradict those goals. It would allow for substantially increased impervious surfaces, toxic runoff, traffic, noise, and light pollution, all of which would erode the ecological health of the preserve and the quality of life of those who live and play next door. As the Michigan Court of Appeals already made very clear this past May, an applicant cannot simply rely on a city's future land use map and a master plan as a basis for rezoning, which is what the applicant did here in every single answer on its application. What the applicant did not do in its application is identify any actual changed condition now requiring CC zoning for this property. Other than discussing the future land use map, the applicant also did not demonstrate any community need for additional CC zone land at this location. And finally, there's no compatibility whatsoever between CC zoning and the only two properties that actually share a property line with this parcel. And any claim that intense commercially zoned property might be an appropriate transition between a nature preserve and residential housing is entirely disingenuous. As those of us at Woods Lake have learned, it's much harder and more expensive to remediate environmental damage from intense commercial uses after the fact than it is to prevent it in the first place. You have an opportunity tonight to recommend a decision for prevention, stewardship, and consistency with Kalamazoo's vision for a green and healthy city. On behalf of the Woods Lake Association and everyone who cares about the future of Kalamazoo's lakes and natural spaces, I respectfully ask you to recommend denial of this zoning request. Thank you.
Be here, but I would not miss it. My name is Barbara Welborn. I reside at eight-nine-zero-seven Tammer's Lane, Richmond. I was born and raised in the Winchell neighborhood. I spent many hours walking, cross-country skiing, and delighting in all of the natural wonders at the Asylum Lake property. In the mid-nineteen hundreds, numerous proposals or pieces of legislation were introduced and rejected for the three former state hospital properties, Lee Baker Farm, Colony Farm Orchard, and Asylum Lake. Some of those included significant development on these properties. In the nineteen seventies, my father, Robert Welborn, first as a county commissioner, then as a state legislator, worked with many other legislators, including my uncle, Jack Welborn, to preserve the Asylum Lake property. When the state conveyed the Colony Farm Orchard property, just west of Drake Road, a stipulation was that Western Michigan University could only use the land for public park, recreation, or open space purposes. In July two thousand and nine, that stipulation was terminated so Western could expand its business park. This was met with strong community opposition. In twenty-nineteen, during construction on the old Carling Colony Farm Orchard property, a heavy rainfall occurred. Inadequate soil erosion and sedimentation control measures failed. The university was cited by the state for unlawful discharge into Asylum Lake. Sorry. I, my breathing treatments give me the shakes. Now, for the third time, the Drive and Shine Car Wash is proposing to change the zoning at forty-three oh-one Stadium Drive from residential to commercial. Forty-three oh-one Stadium Drive shares one thousand five hundred thirty-three feet of Asylum Lake's preserves northern border. Additionally, the property boundary lies approximately a hundred to two fifty feet from the surface water of Asylum Lake. Even more critical, near Drake Road, the property boundary is less than thirty feet from the wetlands that protect Asylum Lake. Twice a week, I drive past two other Drive and Shine locations in Kalamazoo. I do not see the need for a third location at Stadium Drake. The practice-
I live at two-three-two-three Rambling Road in the Winchell neighborhood. I think that the standard of does the proposed rezoning address a demonstrated community need has not been met by the applicant. Indeed, the twenty-twenty-three Kalamazoo Community Need Survey indicates there's greater need for preserving the already limited green space in the city and adding to it rather than for additional commercial development. Each city that I have lived in has had a unique place that the people of these communities have worked to preserve, protect, and when necessary, restore. In South Dakota, we had a waterfall. I happen to live next to a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-acre lake that because of zoning issues, I ended up in charge of a multimillion-dollar lake restoration project. You don't want to see that again. In New York, it was Central Park. I know from personal living adjacent to that small lake that restoring is far more costly than preserving and maintaining. The residents of Kalamazoo have repeatedly vocalized their need in regard to the historical, the economical, and the quality of life values of maintaining and protecting Asylum Lake Preserve from corner to corner as green space. The monetary benefit of development will most likely go to those who neither live or work in Kalamazoo. And will, and they, yet it will be the community to pick up the task of managing destructive aftereffects. Just as New Yorkers would likely be aghast at the idea of commercial development of Central Park, so too are we in Kalamazoo when developers want to destroy a natural green space that's already vulnerable. Asylum Lake is our Central Park. It's Kalamazoo's Central Park. No to development.
Thank you for your time and attention. My name is Ian Magnuson. I live at three-eight oh-one Winchell. Uh, I'm in the Winchell neighborhood, and I overlook Asylum Lake when I wake up in the morning. I served on the Environmental Concerns Committee for four and a half years, during which time I did my small part to help shepherd the adoption of the Natural Features Protection Overlay, the Community Sustainability Plan, and I actually was sitting in Commissioner Tolbert's seat when we filled this chamber, one of the few previous times when the city declared a climate emergency. I'm here to oppose the rezoning of four-three oh-one Stadium Drive. Five questions are being considered by all of you today, um, and many have spoken eloquently on them and many more will tonight, I'm sure, but I'm interested in a sixth implicit question, actually. I had a great college professor who informed me a great lesson that the global is local, and I learned that, uh, the national is also local. And right now, the United States is facing a really important choice. It's fitting that this is election week. New Yorkers chose the right thing on Tuesday when they overwhelmingly chose the right choice. That choice is between money and democracy. I'd like to consider who is in favor of this development. It's two individuals, one in Grand Rapids and one in northern Indiana. Who opposes it? Well, as of before this meeting, at least fourteen thousand individuals have signed a petition opposing this rezoning. I'm sure your inboxes are flooded with emails. I know the city's inbox must be overwhelming. And there's also dozens of hours committed by local volunteers to fill this chamber tonight with at least a hundred people behind me and who knows how many more outside and watching at home. The question that I want to leave with tonight is what does it mean for the city to approve this in spite of overwhelming local democratic opposition?
Hello. Thank you, commission, and I want to thank everybody who came in today to voice their opinions and, more importantly, listen to everyone else's. I'm really impressed by this, and I'm really proud that this is how democracy works in this city. I have enjoyed Asylum Lake for almost all my adult life. Uh, I have enjoyed walking its trails, seeing the family of deer, the wily beavers. I've enjoyed the grasslands. I've enjoyed just sitting around the lake with friends, having wonderful conversations. And I would really like to urge you to reject this rezoning application. Now, I know the master plan calls us to protect and preserve our-
Now, I know the master plan calls us to protect and preserve our environment, and it asks us to be good stewards of the environment. So I encourage you to reject this proposal and consider yourself a good steward of the environment and the things that we have in our town that are beautiful and wonderful. Thank you very much.
Ms. Sharon Ferraro, and I live down in the Vine neighborhood. This is the last greenfield. The Merriam-Webster dictionary defines a greenfield as "a land not previously developed or polluted." This is the last developable privately-owned greenfield funding a commercial corridor in the city. Today, it presents as a woods or a forest to the street with a simple paved walking or cycling path next to the road. On the east side of Stadium, there's a 17-to-20-foot drop from the road into a small valley that covers much of the parcel. That drop is not highly visible until you see the parcel from the west on Drake Road, but it is immediately apparent on the GIS topographic maps available on the City of Kalamazoo website. There are only a few sizable green space parcels left in Kalamazoo that are tree-covered, like the northwest corner of Rambling Road in Oakland or the north side of Oakland between the KPS Administration building and the Fire Station 6. But they are not zoned commercial. Like 4301 Stadium, also known as the Vermulent Farm, they are sloped and would be a challenge to develop. For over 175 years, this land has been open space, and after farming ceased, it grew into the woods we see today. The message that this greenfield conveys is that Kalamazoo has not yet devoted all of its land to commercial, industrial, and institutional development, and this message is amplified by the abutting Asylum Lake Preserve, heavily used and enjoyed by many local people. The proposed rezoning is in a unique spot. Yes, it is on a heavily auto-oriented road on a well-developed commercial corridor adjacent to a major highway. This is a typical, desirable, developable site, perfectly located for chain restaurants, shoe stores, and restaurants. But this parcel is also located next to the Asylum Lake Preserve and across the street from, so far, a modestly-developed PUD green space in Ashamo Township, currently with only one building after 15 years. The parcel, this parcel, 4301 Stadium, the Vermulent Farm, is the visible anchor of the green space in the City of Kalamazoo. Addressing the existing Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Master Plan, the plan shows this area as eligible to be zoned commercial. It is not necessary that the zoning become commercial. There is not a need for 18 more acres of commercial development in Kalamazoo. A CC zoning would be logical and ordinary, following standard development patterns, but Kalamazoo is not always logical and ordinary. We built the first outdoor downtown pedestrian mall in 1959, and for over a decade after that, delegations visited us from all over the U.S. to see how it was working. We merged our police and fire departments with police officers cross-trained as firefighters. We created the Kalamazoo Promise so our KPS students could attend college. We created the Foundation for Excellence to fund aspirational projects. All of these have brought national attention and have worked for us as a city. The Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Plan does not require the parcel to be zoned as CC. It allows that zoning. I argue that keeping 4301 Stadium as a green space, as a wooded area, possibly with a new zoning as a PUD, would be a much better use for it than zoning it to-
My name is Gabriel Jerome, and I stand here before you not only as a resident of Kalamazoo but as someone who deeply wants to believe in the city's promise to protect what makes it beautiful and worth living in. In 2019, our city commission passed the Climate Emergency Resolution, and with that, made a commitment to us, to our children, and to the generations that will inherit the decisions you make in this room. Removing or weakening the Natural Features Protection would break that commitment and set a dangerous precedent that no zoning line can contain. We are talking about one of the most beautiful resources in Kalamazoo. I've walked the trails there more times than I can count. Three different dogs have come and gone and known its beauty. I've had heart-to-hearts with friends there, even a first date, and most importantly, it got me and many people in this room through the isolation we faced during COVID. It's one of the few places in the city where you can still hear the sound of life more than the sound of traffic. And yet, here we are again, fighting the same battle we already fought and won because Mr. Turani sees profit or the rest of us see peace. This proposal isn't just about a commercial zoning. It's about what kind of city we want to be. Do we want to keep carving away at the remaining green spaces that give this community breath or stand for something bigger than one man's profit? We don't need more commercial zoning near the nature preserve, period. His lawyers can dress it up in new zoning language or call it an improved design or guarantees about how it won't get into the watershed, but we see the same project, the same risk, the same disregard for a fragile ecosystem that took centuries to create. You can't renovate Asylum Lake if he's wrong. That lake is a living ecosystem, not an inconvenience for a developer. And we've seen what happens when we underestimate the long-term damage for short-term gain. Kalamazoo still carries the scars of industries that once promised prosperity and progress but left us with poisoned rivers. You can't scrub away contamination with a zoning permit, and just to be clear, we have roughly 137 car washes in the greater Kalamazoo area and one Asylum Lake. So I ask the people of this commission, what do you want the legacy of Kalamazoo to be, and more importantly, what do you want your legacy to be? Because this decision will outlive every person in this room, and no one will remember what is said here tonight, but they will remember that the people appointed to this commission either saved this preserve or surrendered it. That you stood for the voices in this room or for the profits that drowned them out. Your name will be etched in the story forever, so I urge you to choose to stand with your community, not against it. Choose preservation over profit. Choose to protect Asylum Lake and the future of Kalamazoo. Thank you.
Evening, Commissioners, as well as all of the beautiful angry people behind me. I'm so glad to see so many people showing up today. My name is Eve Hibbard. I'm a student at Western. I know there's a couple of us here tonight. I've got a couple of quick things to say. I think that even if it isn't the coveted master plan, calling it "commercial with natural features" is an oxymoron in itself. This property is instrumental in Kalamazoo's protection of keeping public resources public as well as keeping our environment for all of us. And as many other people have said, no, it should not be wasted on another car wash. I only have one more thing, sorry. That's all. Everyone get home safe.
Evening, Commissioners. I'm Josh Kaiser, 1523 Lay Boulevard. I'm with the Asylum Lake Preservation Association, whose mission is to protect the city's largest and most frequented nature preserve, protect it from harm caused by land use changes that impact both the lake and the preserve. I'm also a water quality investigator for the last decade for a local environmental science firm, and I've extensively studied how the land use changes in this watershed have detrimented Asylum Lake. And it's absolutely true. Commercial developments have had a terrible detriment to the critical natural functions and ecosystem services that Asylum Lake provides to our community. So why are we all here? The property of 4301 Stadium Drive is absolutely intrinsically linked to Asylum Lake and to the preserve, environmentally, topographically, hydrologically, and culturally linked. So what happens on this property happens to Asylum Lake. The land and the water are one. And now, the applicant wants to say that hazardous waste left behind by the most vulnerable people in our society is a reason to develop this land and that it's the fault of the open space, of this nature of this land, that that waste is there. But no, it is actually the fault of negligent absentee commercial landlords that that has been able to happen to this property. So the land and water are one here, and this is not a hyperbole. Asylum Lake is a freshwater spring-fed lake, so when rain falls on the high ground, it's filtered through the sand. It expresses a freshwater springs along the banks of Asylum Lake, except for where commercial concrete has turned it into polluted stormwater. So this lake is a source of Portage Creek, Kalamazoo River, trickling down to Lake Michigan. Its waters are linked to the groundwater aquifers that are the drinking water of our city. It's a critical part of the heritage of the freshwater spring, which is Asylum Lake. And so the parcel lines here may separate these two properties, but the land and the water are one. And it has always been a mostly naturalized property, and today it remains the same. It has always been a residentially zoned property, and today it remains the same. It's linked to Asylum Lake, and we know commercial development harms Asylum Lake. Okay, studies since the '70s have proven this. Commercial and auto-centric developments have injured the quality of our land and water in this watershed. Okay, so in addition to sedimentation from construction and toxic automobile runoff, we have winter parking lot salts that are literally turning our freshwater resource into salty water. Okay, the lake is losing oxygen because of this, and it's losing its ability to function naturally. Okay, so new commercial development here would add more pollution into the lake and spread what they say. Putting that stuff into the groundwater chambers will put it into Asylum Lake. So we must do everything we can to deny this request for CC zoning on this property. Thank you.
Ms. Aaron, that's all you need to know about me, because this is not about me. This is about what is going on with this piece of property and the beautiful lake beneath it. There, like many people here have said, there is absolutely no reason for this to be even happening. We got plenty of unused commercial and residential space here in Kalamazoo. I mean, we, many of us here have even been to Liliana Anderson Arboretum, and the development going on around that is taking away from the beauty of that place, and I do not want to see the same thing happen to the preserve here at Asylum Lake. That's the gist of what I have to say, and I hope you guys have enough conscience to deny this zoning change.
Evening. Steve Vannenbush, 621 South Park Street. I just wanted to identify a few resources that haven't been included in the information so far. An archaeological assessment that Western Michigan University did, report by Rory Becker and Dr. Michael Nissany, as a resource for you all. The hydrology study that Josh mentioned is also very important to this decision. And then, thirdly, understanding and remembering that we are on Potawatomi land. The Machibinashi Wish Band had a village at the head of the Kalamazoo River. They likely occupied Asylum Lake in and around it, although we don't have archaeological evidence. It's likely that that is the case. And I would like to just propose an ideation that hasn't been discussed, is maybe we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole in this situation, and that is there a way to step back and look at this property in a completely different way? We've heard how people here value the property in a completely different way that doesn't associate itself with dollars. Is there an educational opportunity here? Is there a way to connect this community back to this lake through history? Through the Native American history? Through the history and programs that are being established at the Kalamazoo College and at Western Michigan University related to cultural history and cultural landscapes? This is a perfect opportunity for this community to create a cultural landscape and make this a win for the entire city. Thank you.
Hey, that's a brilliant idea. And I'm not saying that because I taught at Kalamazoo College for 30 years. My name is Carol Anderson. I live at 328 Fairview. I'm a frequent user of Asylum Lake, and I've got to say, I have slogged through that property more times than you can count, ending up on Drake and then walking back through, right? It's very steep. It will, the water is, plenty of people have said, will just wash right down into Asylum Lake. I have three things to say. First, the applicant has not proven their case. There is no compelling evidence outside of good intentions in the application that I read through. No data, no evidence, "Oh, it's just going to be good for us, and it's a good area because there's a lot of traffic there." And it's a high, you know, it's a high-value property. There is no evidence in the application whatsoever, and that may be the way you guys do business. It's not the way I do business. Secondly, it's my understanding that you need to address the five questions of the master plan. Is this request consistent with 2025, 2035 master plan and strategic vision? No, because there's no evidence. Are there conditions that have changed that support the zoning change? Third time, plenty of people have said it. Third time's craziness. No, there are no conditions that have changed because there's no evidence in the application. Do the changes address a community need? No. In fact, you've heard plenty of community need that says, "Say no to this proposal." Are the proposed changes compatible with the surrounding properties? Again, you've heard plenty of people say no. Will the changes result in logical and orderly development patterns? No, right? There's more traffic. Let's add more, right? Doesn't exactly make sense. I'd just like to echo something somebody before me said. If the nine, last nine months of our national politics have taught us anything, it's time for things to change. That means listening to your constituents, listening to the community members who have been here now, many of them three times, and start putting things forward that is not money. And there's an urgency. I don't know what you need to do, but I want, as somebody else has also suggested, I want you to adopt this area and change the master plan so it's a green buffer zone between Stadium and Asylum Lake.
My name is Jordan Vanis-Petersen. I'm a student at KVCC and a lifelong resident of Kalamazoo. The people of Kalamazoo have spoken up before to say that we do not want any rezoning near Asylum Lake Preserve, and we will say it again. Moving forward with rezoning of this land at the corner of Drake and Stadium would be in direct opposition to the goals of the Imagine Kalamazoo Project, specifically violating the Community Sustainability Plan of protecting the long-term health of the environment and working towards nature-based solutions that benefit the community. Changing of the zoning of this land from residential to commercial would be a direct threat and have a permanent impact on the habitat, wildlife, and the lake itself at Asylum Preserve. Furthermore, moving forward with commercial zoning in this area would not result in logical and orderly development patterns, especially with how busy the intersection already is, the steepness of the incline where buildings would need to occur, and where exactly would driveways be built for these new commercial properties. I'll leave you with one final thought. The developer who wants to rezone this property is not part of our community and will not feel the negative ramifications. Why should they have any influence? Thank you for your time.
Folks, please.
Kivanas, I live at 326 Lake Street. This rezoning will negatively affect Asylum Lake Preserve's ecosystem and its surrounding neighborhoods. That is a fact. No matter how developers claim to mitigate the disruption, and once it happens, there is no turning back. So is it worth it? One of the reasons for changing a zone is if there is a need by the community. If you look at what we, the people of Kalamazoo, need, it is for affordable housing, good jobs that allow people to afford home, groceries, and healthcare, and for our environment and mental health, we need green spaces in the city that people can easily get to. And on a larger scale, we need to be part of protecting our planet from climate change. The developer has stated that he does not know what will go into this space, but it most likely will be some kind of eatery or retail or mix of both in the form of a strip mall, as it is a prime spot right off the highway exit. But there are already plenty of places to shop, eat, and get gas at that exit. We don't need more. The jobs that this kind of commercial development would provide are not jobs that allow people to make enough money to buy a home and raise a family, as anyone who has done retail or restaurant work can attest. We don't need more low-paying dead-end jobs. What we do need are green spaces to go to and be near nature. We need clean water that is not contaminated by development so close to a large body of water. This space is cherished by the people of Kalamazoo. It is one of the few spots where a person can feel immersed in nature for a time without leaving the city. It is a precious and fragile ecosystem, essential to the health and well-being of our community, and the people who will profit monetarily- And the people who will profit monetarily from this zone change don't live in Kalamazoo. They don't care about what we will lose, but we do. Scientists are telling us that we are on the verge of collapse and we aren't getting any help from our leadership in Washington. If we are to change the course, decisions that are being made in hearings just like this across our country is what's going to change our course and save our earth.
Commissioner, my name is Nancy Arca Dupont. I've been a resident of Kalamazoo my entire life. I'm not going to repeat what everybody has talked about, the benefits and the ecological protections. I think what we have to think about doing as a city is maybe sending this piece of land back to the Imagine Kalamazoo land mass ideas and what it should be used for and find another zoning accommodation for this piece of property. It's too close to the Asylum Lake. We don't need more commercial. It's not appropriate for residential. It's in a category all of its own. Thank you.
Good evening. Roger Wyland, Greenleaf Circle, Kalamazoo. First, I would like to say that I personally felt disrespected, if not insulted, by that presentation. It had numerous spelling and grammar errors in it. And I think if, if I were these commissioners, I might feel similarly. Tells me the level of attention and care that the staff put into the preparation. But that's the least of it. In summary, I think you could say that its entire argument was, this property meets this criteria because we say so. And that's the extent of the argument. But I will give begrudging credit to its extremely judicial use of the phrase asylum Lake Preserve, either in the text or the images. That I give the author full credit for. But moving on. Commissioners, my request for you would be that you look into yourselves as deeply and fully as you're able before you cast your vote and ask yourself which side of this issue you really want to be on. Do you want to add more concrete, asphalt, and useless or superficial or certainly unnecessary commercial buildings? Or do you want to be on the side of the Asylum Lake Preserve?
My name is Rosemary Knapp. I live on 1481 Ellington Drive. I'm a student at Western Michigan University, majoring in environmental geology and minoring in environmental sustainability. I come to you tonight as a concerned citizen and frequent visitor of Asylum Lake. I tell you all this information because I want you to see me as more than the middleman between money and your wallet. I am a person and I am here. In the presentation, it was called green, that there would be green ways to overtake this green area. How green is it to destroy a natural preserve? 14,000 people signed a petition that opposed this. If you want your consumer base to actually consume and go shopping at this area, this is your consumer base. These people who directly oppose it are going to be the consumers and they're not going to consume if they oppose it. It's not logical. America was built as a democracy. How democratic is it to ignore the people in favor of money for your wallet? Commissioners, please think logically about this. Even if you do not care about the environment, how logical is it to put something there? I will end this by reminding everyone that we are on stolen land. This is not ours to destroy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Cruiser. I live on Boswell Lane, city of Kalamazoo. I'm not going to be providing further rationalization on why this rezoning request should be denied. I think opposition to this rezoning has been firmly stated within the Oakland Drive Winchell Neighborhood Associations, the Asylum Lake Policy Management Councils, and many other statements. In addition, the community's opposition, I think, is pretty apparent tonight. I added something because when the attorney or the city were providing slide shows, it was interesting that there was no picture if you're looking at Asylum Lake and looking to the north. I wonder why they did that? You know, maybe people should walk and take a look at that and see what a potential development could actually do to that. I am here to say this. The applicant and the city continually to use the NFP as a warm blanket or verbal shelter from this storm. And I think that the community has seen that hiding behind the NFP is a pretty dangerous game. Look around, look at some of the developments that have fallen under NFP and how that has been impacted. The city continues to publicly express the fear of taking. This is another attempt to rationalize rezoning. If you look at the Supreme Court stated in Grand Saquon, and I quote, "This court held that a township's denial of an application to rezone land from agricultural to single-family did not constitute a regulatory taking based on the three-part Penn Central balancing test." And that was part of the United States Supreme Court case. Your recommendation will be a statement on what you value. Your vote will be viewed as a legacy. It will be a reflection upon yourself. Will you say to the community that nature has no value unless developed? I remember talking to a local contractor, showed him the piece of property, and his comment was, wow, what a waste of great land that it wasn't developed. Are you only interested in the green of money or the green of nature? And will you view this land as just another opportunity for a developer to profit from the destruction of the land? Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a 10-minute break. You're not the only one.
What are you talking about?
Commissioner, my name is Nancy Arca Dupont. I've been a resident of Kalamazoo my entire life. I'm not going to repeat what everybody has talked about, the benefits and the ecological protections. I think what we have to think about doing as a city is maybe sending this piece of land back to the Imagine Kalamazoo land mass ideas and what it should be used for and find another zoning accommodation for this piece of property. It's too close to the Asylum Lake. We don't need more commercial. It's not appropriate for residential. It's in a category all of its own.
All right. That is almost exactly 10 minutes for our 10-minute break, which is great. All right, if we can, if folks, folks are quiet down. All right, here we go. So we're going to resume. If we need another break in a reasonable time, we will do that, but that was very helpful. If folks coming up again, if they could again state their, two things. One, make sure everyone signs in on the clipboard. And two, if you could at least state your name before you start speaking. Your address is fine, but if you really don't want to, you don't have to, but at least, please state your name. Okay?
Hello. Okay, so my name is Sophia. I am 29 years old. I moved here from Paw Paw for college. I lived my first year in the valleys and then after that, with help, I was able to be a homeowner on Amherst. So I am less than two miles from Asylum Lake and I can walk there. I don't have to use gas. I get exercise doing that. I get emotional well-being, get spirituality from that. I don't know where these folks live, but first row right there kind of feels like Mr. Potter's and I feel like George Bailey, so felt like that's kind of timing for It's a Wonderful Life reference. I feel like this matters in that climate is changing and I'm going to be living for quite some time, hopefully, so things like this will affect me, I fear, longer than it would affect those that are profiting off it. I think that's a point of concern. I did not prepare a speech for this because I wanted to kind of speak on my lived experience. I have had Asylum Lake help me through breakups. I've had them help me through... I've had them help me through deaths. I've had them help me through changes in life. I have dealt with some depression after graduating college and just trying to find my identity from that because I've always been a student. That's something that matters a lot to me, but I'm also an environmental activist in the capacity that I can do so. I compost. I go pick up garbage. I walk there. I enjoy my green space and I enjoy all the people that I have learned that exist in my community through this. And I just want to keep growing that because it matters quite a lot to me as a resident of this area, living less than two miles from that lake. I want to remind you, I'm not sure where folks here live, but I don't assume it's quite that close and they probably don't walk it quite as often as I do. Thank you for your time and please be a body of commissioners that I can keep electing, moving forward and respecting, eh? Take care. Have a good night. Oh, and if you do live in my neighborhood, it's trash night.
My name is Michael Fountain. I'm a homeowner in Kalamazoo. I urge the commission to vote against CC designation for the parcel at Stadium and Drake. As it stands now, the property offers a natural preserve along a major entrance to the city. This is unique. A commercial enterprise on that corner would be just another heat sink made of office buildings, apartments, and short-lived franchises that would look like the business strip of every other city in this country. You attract more flies with honey than with vinegar and a natural space there will attract just as many visitors as another chicken shack or office complex and for a longer period of time. Once paved, forever gone. I urge you to protect Asylum Lake as a green zoning district and to preserve that buffer at Drake and Stadium. Now that's the aesthetic argument. Now speak to the financial. My understanding is, and I gladly be corrected, my understanding is that the owner bought this property at an inflated price and is now asking the people of Kalamazoo to repair his gamble. He paid 2.5 million for a parcel that had been assessed at $750,000. This is not fair market value, but that is not our responsibility. Or may I please have a refund on my lottery tickets and horse betting? Now, you will hear, you have heard emotional arguments about Asylum Lake. You have heard ecological arguments. The lake is already imperiled by runoff from Stadium Drive. I'll offer you an economic reminder. The expense of repairing the damage will far outweigh any profits. That profit will not benefit citizens as a whole and the blight will be permanent. I remind you of the Allied Paper Superfund site at Cork Street in Alcott. At its peak, Allied Paper was our second-largest employer with jobs for 1,300 employees. I understand why we wanted those jobs, but it cost us $245 million to clean up after them. Mr. Rapp from, I believe, Advantage Commercial Real Estate stated that, quote, "He is not purchasing until he has assurance that it will be rezoned." This would be a permanent modification, I started out saying end quote. This would be a permanent modification of the land. Are we being promised 1,300 jobs again to replace our green infrastructure? Will any profit outweigh the permanent damage done to the largest open space in Kalamazoo uphill in San?
Hi again, folks. We keep the clapping down.
Hello, I'm Iris Potter, also speaking for Tom Duffield tonight. We are passionate and determined to protect Kalamazoo's largest hallmark treasure, the Asylum Lake Preserve, from threatened commercial development again. Preserve means to preserve. We find refuge there in the peace and beauty, just like you, so there must not be development right above and adjacent to it. This green forest space at the busy corner is a wonderful gateway to our city. We, the people, spoke in 2023 and people signed petitions and that continues. We speak again and have fully participated and engaged according to your public participation policy. This zoning request doesn't fit the strategic goal of, quote, "environmental responsibility for a green and healthy city." The master plan does give importance to the public and recognition. That was left out earlier. This is not a judicial process. As you review the community need criteria and what should be considered but not required, we need in request no big commercial zoning and ultimately no development above the preserve, no more threats to water quality from chemical or silt runoff like what we have from the Costco development and we must filter water, no more visual, light, noise, and air pollution as we walk in the preserve, no property excavation, reconfiguration, or tree removal on this natural sloped forested property. The natural features protection overlay has been diluted over the years, so take note. No more loss of this excellent wildlife habitat to development. Much was lost to the big business park already. No more strip mall buildings for leasing, industry, or anything huge that this big Grand Rapids developer plans. No more traffic leading to increased noise and accident potential. As you review what has changed, Stadium Drive is now saturated with all the businesses that we need with several unleased spaces. And nothing else has changed since before. The master plan, Imagine 2025, are aspirations and visions that can change. They are not an obligation to a developer. We support the Asylum Lake Policy and Management Council and ALPA because they know the preserve and pushed hard over many years to protect it for us. We also do need a green space zoning, so please do consider that. So to close, we request to be heard and respected by our city leaders, planners, and commissions. Please, no catering to this out-of-town developer with no investment in our city. Just hear the people's voices saying, protect our preserve and not recommend approval of this zoning request. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Hawes and my family has lived in the Winchell neighborhood since the late 1970s at 2722 Carlisle Drive. The destruction of trees, wetlands, and wildlife, including birds protected under the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, is inexcusable. Once this habitat is gone, it can never truly be replaced. The state of Michigan's own slogan, Pure Michigan, is the official tourism and economic development slogan for the state of Michigan, symbolizing the state's fresh, clean, and natural beauty from its Great Lakes and inland lakes to its scenic landscapes. This campaign was created to attract visitors by highlighting the state's unique outdoor experiences and natural resources. The Stadium Drive and Drake Road corridor is already one of the busiest and most dangerous intersections in Kalamazoo. Adding commercial zoning to this area will increase traffic volume, congestion, and accidents involving injuries and fatalities. This will place additional strain on our already overworked first responders, police, fire, and even hospital staff, and further burden local taxpayers. But perhaps most importantly, this preserve is more than land. It is a refuge, a place of peace, reflection, and connection. It's where grandparents show their grandchildren a beaver dam, where parents teach their children about turtles basking in the sun, and where people go to breathe, heal, and find balance in these stressful times. I urge you to uphold the spirit of pure Michigan and protect this preserve for current residents and future generations. Thank you.
My name is Wendy Denning. I am a Kalamazoo resident and a member of the Asylum Lake Preservation Association. Please vote against changing the zoning of 4301 Stadium Drive from residential to commercial. In this modern day and age of global warming, green space in any municipality or community should be considered a treasure jewel and protected. The property at 4301 is a green space and we should fight to keep it green. Green spaces and trees clean our air, help cool us, muffle noise, provide respite to our soul, and is home to those who live there that have no voice. Kalamazoo has an abundance of commercial properties, some of which are vacant and blighted. More commercial space is not a need. Kalamazoo does not have an abundance of green spaces. The green spaces our community does have need to be maintained and protected for our future generations. It's ecologically prudent to protect the green space at 4301 Stadium. I have a vision of what should happen. I call this the Legacy Project. I have been meeting with community members and I propose to form an entity for the purpose of purchasing the property from Mr. Torani for an amount to make him whole. I respectfully request Mr. Torani give the Legacy Project a reasonable, adequate time to assemble the key players, including himself, to determine a sale price and conditions. Once done, the Legacy Project hires a consulting firm to launch and manage the capital campaign. It would be a win-win for Kalamazoo, for everyone. The goodwill would be enormous and endless. Mr. Torani would be the hero for enabling preservation of the green space at 4301 Stadium. Every person contributing to the Legacy Project would be able to proudly say that they have taken part in creating and leaving behind them, for future generations, this gift, this priceless gem, to our children and our community. Please deny the zoning change to enable Kalamazoo to proceed with the Legacy Project at 4301 Stadium. Incidentally, somebody asked, staff was asked and did not answer this question, if due to the challenging topography, if no access exists, how would that be dealt with? Thank you.
My name is Mary Spradling. I live at 3823 Ruth and Road. I first met Asylum Lake over 60 years ago and I've seen a lot of changes there. I currently live adjacent to the last large piece of green space in Kalamazoo on Oakland Drive and have seen how the natural features overlay has or has not protected that piece of land. The developers have come back twice and asked for permission to cut down more trees after being given permission to cut down 70% of them and they were given permission to cut down more. Anyway, that's not what we're here for tonight. I think it's rather disingenuous to say that the only thing that's up against the property that's for sale is two busy streets and an apartment building and it's all commercial and therefore it should be commercial, totally ignoring what's behind it. But one of the problems here is that Kalamazoo has no designation for green space. And as the planning commission, maybe you can work on that. I know that this piece of land can't be designated like that unless it's purchased by someone who wants to do that, but the whole of Asylum Lake Preserve is zoned for family housing. So perhaps that's something that should be thought about because I hope you're not planning on giving permission to, you know, put a bunch of housing developments on the rest of the property. The plan of the developer is not consistent with the master plan. It doesn't consider green space. It doesn't consider, you know, the whole, the whole beautiful preserve behind it. It's interesting that that lake is named Asylum Lake. The dictionary says that asylum means an inviolable, viable place of refuge and protection. We'd like to keep it that way. So everybody said everything I wanted to say other than that, so thank you. I'm done.
I live at 2517 Pine Ridge Road. Let me begin by saying that I am disappointed that once again, the city planning staff has refused to acknowledge that they at one point made an error in judgment regarding the need for commercial development at 4301 Stadium Drive. I, like many of my neighbors, friends, citizens throughout the city, have been following with a request for the development of all kinds of things near the preserve for many, many, many years. And while there has been a relentless effort on the part of the city to put commercial establishments there, there has also been a renewed, equal, and even stronger opposition to that from everyday citizens and even business people when they become aware and they're informed and they understand the situation. People here tonight before me have countered the staff's arguments and it seems that the city staff is not listening and that they have no intention to listen. The city last updated its master plan in 2017 and did work on it for the years before and I was aware of much of that work. I can't find where it was last reviewed. They're supposed to be doing that every five years and I'm sure they have. But when they first did that plan, late in the process, was when the commercial designation was placed on that piece of property, not at the beginning of the process, late in the process. And it was done without a great deal of public interest and public discussion. Yes, there was some, but like I said, it was very late in the process. And all that time, the city is still advocating for environmental preservation, but they're seemingly blind and deaf regarding that one particular parcel. And it's surrounded, as people said, by residential areas on its close borders. Well, over the next few years, the community became aware of the risk of that decision and became stronger in advocating for the preserve and the retention of residential zoning. The NFPL was established, a minimum protection in order to still allow commercial development. They did not want to get rid of it at all. In 2020 and since, there has been a realization that the city and the people are not on the same page. They seem unreasonably stuck on this issue and this piece of land. Since the last rezoning request, both the Asylum Lake Policy and Management Council and the Oakland Drive and Winchell Neighborhood Association has changed their positions, but not the city, not the city staff. There have been other issues that the city staff has and other departments have.
Thank you.
Good evening. I agree with everything you've heard here tonight, said over and over and over and over and over and over again. My name is Judy Huxman. I live in the Oakwood neighborhood, one mile or so from Asylum Lake Preserve. In this first part, I am representing ALPA, Asylum Lake Preservation Association. I'm here today to tell you in a not-so-polite way to deny the request for rezoning 4301 Stadium Drive to community commercial. Here are the reasons why. The proposed change does not align with the 2025 master plan prioritizing environmental responsibility. Anything done on the property will directly affect the preserve's water, land, and its occupants. There have been no changes to support this rezoning since the last times the request has been denied. The developer couldn't even identify any particular need this project would fulfill. The community needs stand squarely on the need for the protection of the green space. The community needs stand squarely on the need for the protection of the green space. The adjacent properties are residential housing and fragile natural green space. Preserve, it just doesn't fit. It doesn't fit. That being said, this next part is my own perspective. A politician present at the meeting on October 23rd told us that we are trying to, what we are trying to do by stopping this developer from fully utilizing this parcel is similar to a taking. Really? Really? This person purchased the property, his own residential, with a loose promise or assurance that it would probably easily be rezoned commercial. That is squarely on him. It was his big mistake. Now he's threatening to sue if he doesn't get what he wants. So typical these days of whiny rich developers who are trying to get what they want regardless of those who live there, who have opinions on what this community needs and doesn't need, and it is not commercial development on a vital edge of a place of green healing. The current owner is not from Kalamazoo. He builds these car washes, taking our money from Kalamazoo out of the city. He is trying to sell it to another developer from Grand Rapids who probably doesn't live here. If I were you, I'd back out of the deal. Any building on this land will face problems. Look around you at all these humans. These people represent only a portion of the consumer business you will not get in your commercial development. Thank you.
Prince Boris, 3603 Madison Street in Oakwood for 37 years. So I have the Kalamazoo Country Club to the east and Asylum Lake to the northwest, and also many tons of silver maples, which we learn we will be losing out of necessity. We need to put a pause to catering to the wealthy at the expense of our environment. The Country Club not only destroyed acres and acres of natural habitat with their expansion, but now they've cut down many grand old trees that I've seen for decades on White's Road, and it reminds me of Dr., some of Dr. Seuss's illustrations in the Lorax. So please leave Asylum Lake alone. I came to Kalamazoo 37 years ago to work at Community Mental Health as a case manager. One of my first clients invited me there as a meeting place, and no, she did not live there. It was a refuge for her. That's all.
Okay. My name's Katie Josta. I'm a lifelong Kalamazoo area resident, and I've lived near Asylum Lake for about 12 years. I'm here to speak in support of denying the proposed rezoning of 4301 Stadium Drive. After reading the staff report on this request, I was struck by how much of the language favors developer flexibility over our community and environmental protection. The report says this rezoning is not in conflict with the Winchell Neighborhood Plan because lower-impact design and working with existing natural features are all still possible. That the combination of CC and NFPO would strike a balance to create a flexible, market-driven approach to the property while keeping the existing natural features and adjacent preserve in mind. The neighborhood plan and years of community input have been very clear. Any development on this property should require low-impact environmentally responsible design, not just allow it to remain a possibility. It should prioritize the preservation of the delicate ecosystem adjacent to this property, not just keep it in mind, and ensure only whatever protections are feasible or practical. Even if this request is technically consistent with the future land use map, it's inconsistent with the Imagine Kalamazoo 2025 Master Plan and the working draft of the city's 2035 strategic vision. All Kalamazoo neighborhoods are supported by sustainable, responsive, and accessible services that lift people up and bring our community together at every stage of life. Approving this rezoning ignores years of resident input, undermines sustainability efforts, and risks lasting harm to one of the city's most valued natural spaces. Moving forward with this rezoning contradicts the guiding principles of this city: sustainability, continuous engagement, and operational excellence. Ignoring years of community opposition and environmental concern is not having regard for the voices of residents whose lives these decisions impact. And permitting the possibility of high-intensity commercial use adjacent to Asylum Lake is not prioritizing the protection of our natural environment today and for generations to come. This land should be developed in a way that guarantees protection of its natural features, not one that makes those protections possible, and in a way that aligns with our vision our community has for our city. Please recommend denial of this rezoning request. Thank you for your time.
[applause] Focus again if we could keep the clapping down.
My name is David Burcom. I'm a Kalamazoo resident. I am speaking tonight to urge the rejection of the applicant's request. I would like to aim my comment tonight certainly in the direction of the applicant's failure to prove that there is a need for this property to change, there is a failure to demonstrate that this is a logical change to be made to the zoning. And I center this around the idea that has, many have more eloquently stated that the community is against this. There is no need for any of these properties. And I would like to remind the commission that the bulk of these developments that currently occupy the space around Asylum Lake and this parcel are all built within the last 25 years. Costco, Trader Joe's, Western's, BTR, campus. None of this is terribly recent, and that should be kept in mind. There is no logic to that. This is simply an imposed development by those with far more power than the people who bring their individual voices here tonight. I say that because this, to me, demonstrates the totalizing logic of development. Everything must be developed. Everything must have a use. Everything must be extracted and exploited. And I certainly hope you can find reason to disagree with that. Not only with these recent developments of large stores and properties, but also in the way that the totalizing logic of development is used by the applicant to exploit the unhoused to get their way. I find this an extremely disingenuous and frankly disgusting, disgusting point made by the applicant. And I think it only makes sense to them when you think in the totalizing logic of capitalism and the way in which it is used to exploit every surface of this earth. So I would urge you tonight to reject this application. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Tammy Hibner. I'm, I live in Kalamazoo. I'm a resident. My question is, when is enough enough? When are you gonna truly listen to the people of Kalamazoo? These people from Indiana and Grand Rapids, they have no stake here. They don't care what's gonna happen after they develop this land. I wish I could show you the pictures I took of Asylum Lake this morning. So beautiful, so pristine, and all they want to do is throw up a development, maybe a car wash, maybe a strip mall, it doesn't matter. It's already the most, one of the most dangerous corners in this city. So we're gonna add another driveway? We're gonna add another strip of businesses that we don't need? No. I walked around Asylum Lake this morning, and I walked behind Stadium Drive Apartments, the one development that's closest to the lake. And Winchell Way is there too, but that's the only place I saw garbage. I picked up batteries, needles, bottles of unknown liquid, and trash. I filled up a little grocery bag. I should have brought it for you this evening. I wish I would have, but no, I threw it away immediately because it stunk. But please, yeah, it needs to be rezoned. Okay, it needs to be rezoned, but let's rezone it as a green space. We need green spaces in the city of Kalamazoo. We don't need another development with all these empty buildings that we have. We have so much commercial property that's not being used right now. And sorry, Mr. Turani, you made a bad bet. That's not our fault. So send him back to Indiana. He's already got three car washes. One is within three miles of that space. It doesn't make any sense to develop it. This picture that I've got on my phone, I wish I could put it on the screen. I noticed the developers didn't put a picture of the land up on the screen. They put their map. How good. But, you know, what I saw this morning, I saw swans flying over that area. I saw ducks swimming in that area. I saw squirrels and deer. And, you know, people complain about the deer being in their yards. It's because it's overdeveloped, so stop it, okay? I'm just asking you to please listen to the hundreds of people that are opposing this, the thousands of people that are opposing this.
All right. Thank you. So I take a minute to remind people again of the time and just try to be respectful of all, including the applicant. All right? Just share your views. We're happy to hear them, and we're sitting here listening. Try to keep it respectful.
Hi, everybody. My name is Samantha Vimes. I work with the Michigan League of Conservation Voters, but I'm here tonight as a local of Kalamazoo and alongside a partnership of activists in the community. I feel as though many of the people who have already come up have spoken with more research, more long-term experience, more life experience than I have. I have been a part of this city for a mere 14 months, and in that time, I have found a home. And it alarms and upsets me to see that this sort of project has such a history and that it has been repeated so many times. In the research I've done about this project, I have learned about the dozens of other developments over the decades of people trying to move in on that spot and how frequently the community has fought against it. I have no doubt that people who have spoken before me have spoken before this council before, trying to defend this space. While there are other people who can put it more clearly, more intelligently, and more succinctly than I can, I'd like to put a little bit of spice on it. What I'm hearing tonight is that a rich man made a bad bet, bought some land that he didn't actually have a future for, and now he's upset at us for it. We have a developer who is talking about our neighbors, unhoused or no, as if they are things, referring to the things that keep them alive as environmental waste. I have heard that there are plans for more extraction capital on a neighborhood made up entirely of car lots and fast-food departments that come from other cities, other states, and other countries. That is one of the most dangerous places in town as a pedestrian, and it is absolutely inaccessible to most people living in the area. The idea of putting any other commercial development in one of the few mature green spaces this city still has is a foolish grasp at capital that we simply do not need. Dozens of people have spoken before me to say as much. Dozens of people have spoken before me over decades to say as much. Thank you so much for listening to us again.
My name is Bee, and I would like to tell you about a rare species of bee called the rusty-patch bumblebee that was found here in Kalamazoo at Asylum Lake. It was thought to be extinct in 2017, but it was found here by someone just walking around in the neighborhoods. With rezoning that land, the repopulation of that species could be interrupted and it could be completely extinct. Asylum Lake is an environmentally sensitive land, and to rezone it for commercial properties will completely destroy the land. We're talking about multi-generational loss of living creatures. We don't even know about the topsoil and the erosion from the construction that can harm this land. Not to mention that this portion of stadium is the seventh most dangerous intersection in Kalamazoo. That added traffic will just make it more dangerous. This goes against the Kalamazoo Master Plan and does not meet a community need. And I will take a quote that I got from the Kalamazoo 2025 Master Plan that says, "Every increment of construction should be done in such a way as to heal the city," and this will do the exact opposite. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Ash, I also live in Kalamazoo, and many people have been up here tonight to talk to you about the absolute horrors of the environmental degradation that could occur if you allow this to go through. Me, I'd like to take some time to talk to you and make a plight for our homeless community. Like a few other speakers here, I find it really disgusting and shameful to talk about them in such a way when those are our neighbors. We live here with them. They live here with us. We are all in community together. And to speak about them as if they are a blight on our community instead of members of the community is really, really shameful and disgusting. If we need space for the homeless people, we need to house them. It really is that simple. We need to have housing for these people that they can afford. If you want the people out of Asylum Lake and you don't want them to pollute Asylum Lake, and you don't want them to pollute your land, we need to give them housing. Thanks.
My name is Lillian Suarez, and I live on 1116 North Park Street. And I've been going to Asylum Lake a lot with my family, and I enjoy it a lot. And if we build any commercial plot, the animals will lose their homes and will have nowhere to go. And some will possibly die. Also, part of the forest will be destroyed and will be unable to be replaced. The commercial zoning will pollute the lake and will possibly harm the animals that live there. Anyways, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Aaron Thiel, 158 Imperial Street. I don't have any points to hit that everyone else hasn't already hit, but I think the developers made a lot of references to how this matches into the 2025 Master Plan. And it is November of 2025, and we really need to start thinking about what the 2035 plan looks like and what our city's gonna go from. Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Khan, and I live at 2211 Rambling Road in the Winchell Neighborhood. Kalamazoo, or the Winchell Neighborhood is, the reason why my husband and I moved to the Winchell Neighborhood, one of the reasons is because of Asylum Lake. We live within walking distance, and it's, I would say it's my most treasured place in Kalamazoo, and it's my home away from home. I'm an avid lover of the outdoors and an avid hiker, and given that I can't always be up north or in the mountains, Asylum Lake is where I can hike, and I do that multiple times per week all year round, even in the winter. My concern is that commercial property threatens the air, the water, and the wildlife in Asylum Lake, which is inconsistent with the master plan and the strategic vision to preserve natural areas. Conditions have not changed that would support rezoning. Rezoning would not address a community need, given that many other commercial properties are for sale, whereas Asylum Lake does support a community need for peaceful green space. And let's try to keep it that way. So I really urge you to oppose the rezoning of Asylum Lake. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Laura Moss. I live on Denway Drive in Kalamazoo. About a year ago, I retired from WMU Landscape Services where I had the pleasure of stewarding Asylum Lake Preserve as part of my work. I was responsible for mowing and picking up trash and all sorts of things that made picking up trash the best thing a person could do for a living. And I think what a lot of people, maybe you don't understand, is what a fragile balance it is at Asylum Preserve and any, any green space. There are so many threats from commercial buildings to invasive plants and vandalism and just, it's always a balance, and there's always threats to it. And like many people before me have said, this green space is a treasure. This is not something that we get back if something happens. One early spring, when they were developing the BTR-2 on Drake Road, my coworker and I were coming down and noticed that their silt walls had failed and all this muddy sludge was draining right into Asylum Lake. Nobody plans that to happen. Nobody builds a car wash and expects it to destroy the lake or the quality of the water. But that stuff happens, and it happens frequently, and the consequences for it are little or none. And once, once the contractors are gone and the businesses are there, you don't know what landscapers are spraying on there. You don't know what invasives are growing along the edge of that property. There is, I have seen it hundreds of times in my profession that landscapers nowadays, they spray and they mow and they weed whack and they're gone. They don't know an invasive from a brick. And, and so you'll, I can point it out everywhere in Kalamazoo. It happens, and it doesn't take much. You, you look at the, the west side of the lake already is full of fragmites, which is horribly invasive and between western and the city, the, the care of the preserve has been degraded to the point where they don't have a natural features manager anymore full-time. They have, you know, cut staff so that these things can't be kept on top of. And I strongly urge you to vote against letting it be degraded anymore and stand up for what you know as Kalamazoo's treasure. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Caroline Enriquez, and I live about five minutes away from Asylum Lake. I've only lived in Kalamazoo for about five years now, so I definitely can't speak with the experience that a lot of people that have spoken tonight can. But one thing I can speak on my experience with is living in California, where I lived for 20-plus years before that. And I lived in Southern California in a very, very developed area. We didn't have many green spaces. One of the reasons I was excited to move to Kalamazoo a few years ago was because of all of the greenery here, all of the nature. And I just want to, I guess, emphasize that while, while a company, you know, I, I have a lot of respect for our planners, our city planners here, and for the fact that I am sure that if this space is developed, that they would be doing their best to keep it, you know, safe space for the greenery, for the nature there. But I will say that I know from personal experience that these companies that come in, they can afford to pay the fines. They can afford to come in and break laws. They do break laws. They always break laws. These big companies that come in from these other cities and states don't have any vested interest in following our rules other than maybe financial loss, which would be less than probably all of the money that they'll be making from the traffic coming in from 131, from other areas that will be coming here. And yeah, I just don't really see what the value is for our specific community here. I think that, you know, there is a great chance that laws are broken and that they will just pay those fines. That happened in California quite a bit. Disneyland, for a long time, was not allowed to run fireworks every night, but they did anyways. They just paid the fines every single night. They broke the law and nobody cared because they just paid those fines. I don't want to see this space developed and then, you know, for that space to end up breaking laws and for these companies just pay the fines and for our city to then pay the cost of whatever it costs to fix whatever it is that they, you know, mess up in that area. So yeah, that was all. I just wanted to share that. I really appreciate that we have forums to speak to you guys. I know you guys are tired. We are definitely all tired. So thank you very much.
My name is Lori Lang, and I live in Portage, Michigan. I can tell you that there are many people here who have already said everything that we're always, that we're going to say, and far better than I have. But I will tell you that as a master naturalist and a forager who has put countless miles on the Asylum Lake trails, that I can tell you that our community is literally starving for green spaces. Especially as those commercial areas encroach ever closer and they're dwindling those spaces to a handful. With 48 other commercial properties that are currently on the market, there are many other choices to choose for an enterprising venture. But at the end of the day, we're not here to tell you all of the reasons why we need a green space. We are here to be put on record for requesting a denial of this applicant's request for CC Commercial for this section of property. There is no concrete plan in place by the applicant. It's nebulous, nebulous at best. And with a previous request for a drive and shine car wash, there is clearly no need for this as there is one nine-tenths of a mile down the street on Stadium. If you want to be part of this amazing community, then please listen to us. Please listen to the community here tonight and do not request the rezoning request. Thank you.
Close enough? Okay. I'll be addressing the following criteria. This development does not meet the community need. It actually runs counter. We are not in a national commercial zoning crisis. We're in a national housing crisis. And this may be a microcosm of that. In Kalamazoo County, incomes have risen 19% since 2019. The housing prices are up 46%. The federal government says households should not pay more than 30% of their pre-tax income to housing costs. If you pay more than 30%, you're cost burdened by housing. Yet in 2023, 30% of all Kalamazoo households are financially burdened by housing. 48%, almost half, of Kalamazoo County renters pay more than 30% of their income on housing. On the way home tonight, all of us are going to pass the homeless downtown, and then we'll pass people sleeping in their cars for the night. I see them every week. And then out of everyone else we see, one-third of them will be burdened by the cost of their housing. We're in this housing crisis because market forces and profit do not always align with community needs. Due to complex market forces, housing is not as profitable as it used to be. We heard tonight that there is no residential development interest in this property, only commercial, despite those crushing statistics that I just listed. This board exists at the intersection of free market whims and community need. It is the obligation of this board to reject proposals like this when they tell us that our community needs are not profitable enough. The precedent this board would set by ruling in favor of commercial zoning on residential land in 2025 despite our desperate need for housing is counterintuitive to this board's purpose. This property should be residential or bust, bust being preserved. The board should reject commercial zoning for this property. Thank you.
Mark Kaufman, Aberdeen Drive, Kalamazoo, and one of the founders of ALPA on December 1990, some 35 years ago. Part of the logic justifying this rezoning request points to the existing commercial land uses along Stadium Drive heading toward downtown. However, the results of establishing these commercial businesses have not been without persistent conflicts in certain areas. During my time on this planning commission, we had to revise the city's comprehensive plan. Several years after I left this board, I served on the land use committee for the current ODWNA neighborhood plan, which incidentally is where my wife and I have lived since 2004. During our neighborhood planning and throughout the period I worked on the comprehensive plan, complaints echoed from homeowners living in Windchill's Fair Oaks Circle. Commercial buildings along Stadium Drive were constructed adjacent to their backyards throughout the 1970s and 80s. Today, these include a laundromat, Wild Bill's Tobacco, Sweet Waters, BW3 Bilbo's, and others. This land use clash has precipitated numerous complaints by residents, including late-night noises and lighting, fast food smoke, nighttime music booming during Wayside West's operation, and even a significant dumping of concrete, believe it or not, on top of a sanitary sewer easement, to name a few. The blanket commercial rezoning requested tonight for the Stadium Drake property includes no consensus planning. There are no assurances to provide transitional levels of development or buffering to minimize similar negative effects of the encroachment on the families who call Stadium Drive Apartments their home east of the subject property. This incompatible rezoning would introduce a commercial creep without substantial buffering required and encroach on the borders of Asylum Lake and the Asylum Lake Preserve, which is restricted parkland for 50 years now. Commercial rezoning for this property is wrong. Variances to the NFP overlay should be anticipated, but absolutely inexcusable, and I join all the other voices tonight and ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Robert Pelish. I live at 2228 Springmont Avenue in the Oakwood Neighborhood since 1988. An example has been given. Suppose a person buys a property in your neighborhood and decides to build a house. The other neighbors can't really say they don't want you to build a house and prevent you from building. You know, that's all totally true, but that has absolutely nothing to do with this situation. Attractive land that is a historical property on a commercial avenue was erroneously considered just like any other property and included in a plan to be rezoned commercial. The entire community has risen up to advise the city that there are serious environmental results impending if that error is perpetuated. Over 200 people attended the last meeting to discuss the error, and so far, 14,000 people have signed a petition to make the city planners aware of the error in planning. As with the Kleinstock Preserve, the Lillian Anderson Preserve, the potential for plans to purchase the property and entrust it to a permanent steward with a 501(c)(3) nonprofit is very strong. We need to protect the green space and wetland for posterity. I mean, I was one of the founding members along with, with Mark in 1990 of ALPA, and you know, it's 35 years ago, okay? In another 35 years, I don't think I'm going to be here. All right? So we got to do something permanent, you know, because I can't keep coming up here every two years. Forever. Okay? So Kalamazoo is a jewel of a city and does not have to become the victim of uncontrolled urban blight. This is only a small area we ask you to protect. As I speak, there are several areas in Kalamazoo that are being deforested for development. Let's not allow developers to destroy Kalamazoo's Weldon Pond.
Oh, y'all tired? Because I got out of work and came directly here, and you're still at work. So you've got to be more tired than I am. So let me make this brief. My name is Nicholas James Hampton. I was born at Bronson Hospital and went directly to 604 West North Street, Kalamazoo, Michigan, where I was born and raised. We took bike trips from the north side all the way to Asylum Lake just to enjoy the park. If you screw this up, children are going to lose that across the city. When I came back from college and there was a gathering of artists from across the city, the name that they chose to represent themselves with was Asylum Lake. That lake is the soul of the city. And when I was in Portland, found myself a little bit of money and a good job and decided to come back home, my first consideration for where I was going to live was how close it was to Asylum Lake Preserve so I could enjoy my Sundays walking through the lake. Do not tell me that there's a good developmental cause that these men and women can find to destroy my lake. That is my lake? That is these people's lake? That's your lake until you vote against it. And by God, you can be as tired as you want to be, but if you come out here with a yes vote on redistricting, I'm pretty sure there's going to be thousands of people, me included, that'll make sure that you never have to be as tired as you are right now on those little chairs of yours again. Hey. Thank you for your time. I hope you get some sleep.
Hey, y'all. I'm Sarah, 20-year resident of Kalamazoo, 15-year homeowner on Cedar Street, former association board chair of the Vine Neighborhood. And I'm tired. Retired. Most of us would rather be at home right now instead of having to drag ourselves back in here, again, to remind y'all, again, of who you are here to serve. Five years ago, I stood here while one of our most centrally located and universally beloved nature preserves was facing this same exact dam threat from an out-of-state car wash baron who has since diminished our business corridors with his Vegas Strip Drive and Shine eyesores that he was then threatening to slop next to Asylum Lake. I have a serious question for all of you. Have you been there? Have you walked those majestic trails? Have you watched a sunset over that water as your heart breaks and heals? If you haven't, do you really dare to presume to have the right to determine the fate of our most sacred land? Five years ago, I was here late into that night to offer a gentle reminder that you all are here to represent the interests and to trust the best judgment, not of developers, not of entrepreneurs, not of yourselves, but to represent the best interests of the people of Kalamazoo. And here we are again, and this time I come with no gentleness, because this city keeps seeming to forget that no matter how much of our sacred land, air, and water they poison every day, the capitalists who own the levers of power in this town need not, should not, must not own your deference and compliance just because they've bought most of the seats at your tables. I urge you all to read the fucking room. If you're offended by my frustration, I urge you to be more offended by the relentless corporatist destruction of our ecosystem locally and globally. It is crystal clear that the people of Kalamazoo have spoken again. There is clearly no debate on this issue among the people of Kalamazoo. I expect you to fulfill your oaths to the residents of our imperfect but beloved city by bending to the will of the people and once again uncompromisingly denying this dam rezoning request and denying the removal of the natural features protection overlay and send these out-of-town opportunists packing again.
All right. If I hear any more curse words or other disrespectful language, I'm going to mute it.
We're all still sitting here, we're all still listening, but I will mute the microphones if I hear that kind of language.
My name is Andy Argo, I'm a resident of the Vine Neighborhood. In one way or another, I've seen this situation play out for the better part of a decade now. There's a zoning meeting, there's a developer, a huge swath of the community comes out and says, "Protect Asylum Lake." It occurs with such regularity that I could probably just dust off some of my old notes and thoughts from the archives of my social media or my yappings that I do on my radio show, and I'd only need to change a few references to, you know, the dates and the year. There are people a lot smarter and more eloquent than me who could speak to the necessity of, you know, the environmental protection that the preserve needs from commercial development. I wanna just take my time to ask a broader question, which is just why? Why, time after time, do we have to do this? We need everybody to come down to a meeting on such-and-such a date and repeat ourselves again and again and again and again. I would take it broadly, you know, trying to connect this with, you know, there's a lot of discussion in the last few months about, you know, democracy, about authoritarianism, and this situation here is about those things. And it's a very old story. Someone wants to develop land that should be a community asset, and the community disagrees. They express that disagreement in letters, in phone calls, in a very long public comment section at a zoning meeting. And I wanna pose this question to the folks on the dais, and, you know, just suppose this question just went before a vote to the general public here in Kalamazoo. And I'm aware of the strategic plan and the history behind that, but framing is everywhere, everything. Pose this question. If you pose this question on the ballot, should this land, which is right next to the Asylum Lake Preserve, be zoned for commercial use? And I really don't think you need a political science degree to know how that would go. Yet we continue to face this year after year, season after season, because there are some who look at that land and don't see Asylum Lake, they see another place to extract profit from. As liberal as Kalamazoo always purports to be, that is the illiberal truth. This remains an issue only because someone has a claim through deed, through money, that supersedes the will of the people. It is that imposition of a will against the majority who see an extension of valuable natural beauty and green space where others may see a shimmering strip mall on the hill or a car wash. However, that will is unrelenting, and people will keep coming back again and again and again and again to protect that preserve. And I just wanna finish by saying, you know, any business that... The obvious repercussions if this goes forward is it'll get... Thank you.
As previously established, we're all very tired. I also work at 6:30 in the morning, so I'll do my best to make this fast and keep my language PG. I have to say, when I heard that this was up again, this issue, I kinda laughed, because I don't know, I'm no finance bro, but purely from a financial perspective, I would kinda like to know what consulting firm has Dave Rapp laboring under the delusion that any venture that's been this repeatedly, this vehemently rejected by the community whose business he hopes to court is a hot business idea. I don't know where that one comes from, maybe he might wanna reconsider the advice he's getting. I also think it's funny that in response to the concerns already raised by the community about the nature of the development, we don't get any information at all, it's apparently a surprise, but we've been assured that it will serve the needs of the community. As touched as I am that a Grand Rapids real estate development firm knows about my needs, let alone is centering them, I kinda feel like if the nature of this development was gonna be such a boon to Kalamazoo, surely it would furnish the majority of the pitch? Bit odd to me that that's a secret when that's supposedly gonna be such a blessing for this community. You know, in a world where the amount of unsullied nature is still accessible to the public that isn't behind a paywall continues to shrink, I know I for one cannot wait to take my future children and show them the spot where their father proposed marriage to me in the shadow of a car wash megaplex. Or whatever hideous eyesore of a strip mall was most recently vacated by yet another failed business. Look, risk is intrinsic to investment, anyone who's invested knows that. And I for one just wanna know if you are prepared to stand with the citizens of this community and listen to what they have to say, or are you prepared to climb over the outpouring of dissent that you've been listening to for hours to coddle the whims of a series of capitalists who for some reason feel entitled to ask this community to absorb the cost of their dumb business ideas? Peace out, we're good.
Hi, my name is Matt Soers. I wasn't intending to speak here tonight, but while everybody has brought up a lot of arguments about the environmental impacts in the area, and I wholeheartedly agree with those, I care deeply about those issues too. The one thing that I've seen strangely absent from all of this is a really detailed economic discussion. I know some people have touched on this, but the point that this has been like commercially necessary for the community to me is laughable, given that the strip mall across the street has had vacancies in it for years. The anchor store in that same strip mall is declaring bankruptcy and will be gone. I don't understand why we need to be like bulldozing more land for more commercial property when the commercial properties that are in the area are struggling. Like, you know, there's one store that's turned over three times in the last 10 years. Why are we throwing more money after this problem? Like, I'm sorry, David, this is a bad investment. I don't know what these people are telling you about this, but this is... This is a terrible idea. I mean, what, $2.5 million for this? I know he's got $54 million in like real estate properties in his portfolio that he's trying to sell, but like this is a bad investment. Like, you know, the whole community is against it. You think you're gonna build anything there and people are gonna shop there? No, people are gonna be picketing, people are gonna be protesting. And that's not even considering the amount of money that's gonna go into constructing it. Like, I moved here to Michigan as a temporary construction worker, and I can tell you that that lot is gonna be prohibitively expensive to build anything on. And then after moving here, I went back to school, I got a degree, I was teaching economics for a while, and I can tell you also that the economics of that area are also terrible. All the points I made earlier. I mean, yeah, I know they built Costco in that area, but like Costco and all those businesses are sucking up everything else, like nothing can compete with them. So why are you gonna put more stuff in there? I mean, the smart thing to do is to, you know, expand residential areas, you know? The lot right next to it is an apartment complex, and I know people have voiced, you know, opposition to that, but that is a far better investment and use of that area than commercial stuff, which is just gonna wither and die, you know? And we're gonna have more vacant businesses, another empty strip mall, like right across the street from where people are coming into the city. And it used to be one of the most beautiful spots, you know, forest, rolling hills, just gorgeous. And now, it's just like every other strip mall in America. And, I mean, that doesn't make any economic or commercial sense for that area. And I think it's just, you know, from... Without taking emotion out of the equation, I think it's logically the worst thing you could do for that corner. But, thank you.
I'm actually gonna call for another five-minute recess, just five minutes, and just stretch legs and take a... All right, we are reconvening at 10:41. I think that's almost exactly five minutes, so I appreciate everyone, and I'm ready to roll again.
You've had your five minutes to prepare for me. My name's Sean Kermath, I'm a Kalamazoo resident, I teach philosophy at Western Michigan, and I drive this intersection every day, and I honestly can't fathom even more traffic there. I moved from the east side, I'm a Kalamazoo transplant, where the traffic is 10 times worse, and I moved here amongst many reasons for green space like Asylum Lake, where I'm from. Developers have slowly encroach on every inch of green space. They'll promise things, and through either variances or fines, they'll destroy the green space or cause just enough light pollution and noise pollution that slowly the birds stop nesting there, the water gets slowly polluted, the animals move, and oh, look, now there's more land to be developed. If I wanted to live in an endless strip mall, I would just move to Grand Rapids, but I moved to Kalamazoo. I love this community, this is the community where I met my wife, this is the community where I plan to build a life, and my needs are met. My spiritual needs are met, my need for nature is met by Asylum Lake, my need for stuff is met by the Costco and the Target on Main, and every store already in the couple-mile area right there. In fact, my needs are so met, there's empty spaces sitting there because I don't have any other needs. I plead with you not to make this change. I would hate to see 10 years from now, a blighted strip mall on that slope and a damaged Asylum Lake, because that is all that will happen if this passes. Thank you.
My name's Rex Brugman. I live at 806 Ellendale in Kalamazoo, in the Arcadia Neighborhood. I'm the president of the Arcadia Neighborhood Association. Just wanna repeat a few points with regard to the applicable standards, in particular 5B, C, and D. Whether and the extent to which there are changed conditions that require an amendment, I believe facts have certainly been presented this evening to show that there are not changed conditions that require an amendment. Whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment addresses a demonstrated community need, the proposed amendment does not address a demonstrated community need. And finally, the factor compatible with surrounding uses, whether and the extent to which the proposed amendment is compatible with existing and proposed uses surrounding the subject land, it is not. And I think the facts presented tonight are absolutely clear on that point. And I will tell you, I'm a practicing attorney, that's how I make my living, and so I have a tendency in this situation to focus on kind of the way things are framed and the applicable standards and so forth. But in terms of the relevant facts presented tonight, I would say to you that what I find most compelling are the descriptions of people's emotional relationship with the Asylum Lake space, and I think they're well-grounded concerns, in particular with all things that can impact their experience of that space. Because I think our green spaces have just a profound impact on us, and the ability to just walk into and walk through a green space is enormously healing and emotionally regulating in a way that we really need, need now more than ever. And I just think, again, the people who've told you their experience and their emotional relationship with this place, 30 years ago as a lawyer, I would've been least focused on that. I would've been most focused on the technical and the economic points and the master plan. Now, with more life experience and lived experience, I just think you look to... Does this erode the experience within that space? It will. It just will. So I thank you for your attention and your service to the community. I'm asking you to not recommend passage of this and vote no. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Mitchell, I live at 4471 Mulberry Lane in Kalamazoo Township. This rezoning request is not consistent with the vision that this board or the commission has for Kalamazoo. The city has emphasized a priority to preserve, restore, and mitigate damage to natural areas, including preserves, creeks, and rivers. This... This request would allow for development that threatens to create new damage at the Asylum Lake Preserve while the city is actively focused on restoring and mitigating existing damage that's been done by previous poor decisions. It simply does not align with the city's vision. A happy, healthy city is a city that listens to the feedback of the community. It's a city that prioritizes the needs of the many over the interests of a few and certainly over the interests of a few out-of-towners. I don't believe there's been any material changes since this last request was withdrawn last summer. The community has showed a continued outpouring of support urging the city to reject this rezoning request. And to my understanding, when I checked this afternoon as I was writing these notes, 14,264 people had signed the change.org petition urging you all to reject this rezoning This rezoning request does not even specify how the property will be used or why it's necessary to be rezoned commercial. My understanding is that the obligation is on the person who's making the request to explain why it's necessary, why there is a community need, how this rezoning request is going to meet that need. We've however, explained why the Asylum Lake Preserve serves a very real community need for residents and for visitors to Kalamazoo. Allowing for additional commercial development adjacent to Asylum Lake would have an irreversible detrimental impact on ecology and the topography of the preserve. Existing commercial development in the area has already been documented to have impacted the watershed of the preserve. There's a real community need to preserve our green spaces and the city of Kalamazoo has emphasized that commitment to the preservation of our green spaces. This is your opportunity to demonstrate your commitment to that. Disregard for future environmental impact has already had a long-lasting effect on our environment and is still impacting our community today and into the future. We're dealing with PFAS cleanup. We're dealing with heavy metals. Don't let us deal with whatever is going to come from additional commercial development. Just would add that this is the 10th most dangerous intersection in 2021, the 7th most dangerous in 2022. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Taylor Donnelly. I moved to Kalamazoo eight years ago. I live in the Vine neighborhood. I own three businesses in Kalamazoo. One is a partnership LLC and two sole proprietorships. So I have experience in looking for places to put my businesses. And I think that this is a space where people are definitely, it's not a great space to be in, but I've seen in other cities where they will add a parking lot here and then a strip mall there. And they're all kind of smaller things that might make sense a little bit, but then these nature preserves become boxed in and they become degraded beyond repair. They showed pictures earlier. That isn't necessarily even a little bit of what I'm talking about. And I think that if we believe that it's bad now, I don't see how that's going to improve it by adding more commercial spaces. I also believe that making this decision isn't just about one parcel of land. It's about what kind of Kalamazoo that we want to live in. So do we want a city that protects wild spaces within our borders or trades them away piece by piece? So I encourage that we do not change the zoning. That's all.
Good evening, Mike Zwick. I live on Wellington Road, about two blocks from Asylum Lake. I pass by Asylum Lake every day on the way to work. I note at all times of the year, Asylum Lake's parking lots on both Drake and Parkview are filled with people who use that lake and use that preserve. My family has used it for many years. I don't want to see that natural habitat disturbed or ruined. I point out a few things in looking at the arguments. A lot of people have already spoke about them, so I'm going to just hit some points that haven't been touched upon. One, in addition to the fact that it's not needed, as many people have pointed out, I'd point out that one of the people who spoke earlier today indicated that the plans are aspirational. And when they spoke of the windshield plan and how the rezoning of this particular parcel would come in conflict with the windshield plan and their idea of what they, I had hoped the land use would be, that the windshield plan was just aspirational. Well, I would point out that the same could be said about the Kalamazoo plan here, that relabeling it as commercial was just aspirational and does not require you to, in fact, rezone that piece of property. I'd also point out that the nature of this kind of a transaction is piecemeal. And the piecemeal nature of this where there can be an appeal, three years later, another appeal, three years later, another appeal, and it'll be handled by different boards. So one of the questions was brought up, one speaker brought up that the request for change, if it was granted because it's a, the NFP protection, there would be a zoning appeals board hearing and an NFP board hearing. And they said that in the argument that that would somehow potentially stop anything from, bad from being agreed upon for the land use. I'd point out that those kinds of conflicts don't necessarily protect anyone. We can still have a conflict between the zoning appeals board and the NFP board. And there's no real clear way to say, well, the NFP is going to win on this one. It's, there's no protection, no guarantee that the NFP will come out ahead. So based on that, I'd say that I'd equate this to a spoiled kid asking again and again, can I have more candy now? Can I have more candy now? And I think we just need to send him back to his room and say no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is, oh, was that way too loud? My name is Tom Howes and I've lived in Kalamazoo for 20 years. I'm asking you to deny rezoning of this parcel due to the following reasons. Consistency with adopted plans. The master plan prioritizes environmental responsibility, climate resilience, and neighborhood compatibility. The windshield neighborhood plan reinforces that priority. It envisions, quote, "low-impact development along Stadium Drive guided by natural features of the land and should not," still quoting, "generate excessive traffic, noxious odors, or noise." It further reiterates that, quote, "especially at the southern end of the intersection at Drake Road and Stadium Drive." This is an approved plan for the city. A concerning passage in the staff report directly contradicts this city-approved language. In the findings section, it states that the proposed zoning supports high-intensity commercial uses. That's the opposite of the adopted plan's intent to buffer the preserve with low-impact transitional uses and not invite large-scale commercial activity into a residential and conservation edge. Number two, the natural features protection intent. The NFP exists to protect steep slopes, mature trees, and the watershed. Community commercial brings paving, lighting, deliveries, and runoff, all incompatible with the overlay's purpose. These are not mitigate later issues, especially for this land. Most importantly, public interest and compatibility and process. There is no demonstrated public need for new commercial zoning here. Compatible commercial nodes already exist along Stadium Drive. This proposal is not compatible with adjacent residential and conservation uses and disrupts the planned pattern for low-intensity frontage. Equally concerning is a pattern in the staff report of omitting or downplaying public sentiment. The city's public participation policy, one that I really trust, is cited in the staff report, but it is used more as a box-checking tool rather than a reflection of engagement. The report mentions the applicant hosted a meeting at KVCC and was attended by 50 individuals, yet offers no summary of what was said. It references the 2020 planning commission meeting only in passing, despite it being, as recently elected official noted, "the most highly-attended meeting in City Hall's It also admits data like the 14,000 signature petition and other critical comments from KVCC that night. Community need seems defined independently of the community itself here. Because of established and persistent history with this parcel, approved policy and actual community need expressed here tonight, please vote no.
Commissioners, my fellow citizens in Kalamazoo, my name is Zachary Laster and I reside in the city at 110 East Michigan Ave. We are gathered tonight not to argue over lines on a map, but to affirm the deepest commitment we share, the protection of the Asylum Lake Nature Preserve. It's not just a peace property. It is a sanctuary. It is a public trust. We are here to uphold a promise made long ago. In 1973, the Kalamazoo County Parks and Recreation Commission and the Kalamazoo Planning Commission officially adopted a resolution for this property to be preserved for all county citizens to enjoy. This commitment is not new. It is a five-decade-old mandate. This commitment must override any private temporary commercial objective. Now, we understand the desire for profit and we sympathize with financial setback, but it's also a fundamental truth that the existing rules were known and the responsibility for due diligence rests with the buyer. A financial disappointment does not justify upending the future of an entire natural resource. And yet, in a cynical attempt to sway this commission, we have seen photographs of a tragic symptom of a larger crisis, photographs of human beings experiencing homelessness used not to seek true solutions, but to justify an intense commercial intrusion at the edge of Asylum Lake. We cannot allow the representative of this developer to weaponize the vulnerability of our neighbors to serve a private financial agenda. We cannot confuse the failure of developers to develop needed housing with the permanent destruction of a natural buffer. The presence of that encampment is not a call for commercial development. It is a clear symptom of a neglected property and irresponsible greedy developers. Let us not use a picture of desperation to distort the facts. We are asked tonight to authorize community commercial development, a designation for big-box, heavy traffic, and massive parking lots. This is a choice for the most intensive development. This level of development will introduce massive increases in permeable surfaces and stormwater runoff, creating irreversible catastrophic threat to the fragile watershed and the water quality of Asylum Lake itself. Some things once lost can never be bought back. The integrity of the Asylum Lake watershed is one of them. We cannot choose the expeditiency of commercial tax base over the long-term health of a permanency of an ecosystem. This is a choice between a short-term gain for one and enduring loss for all. Your decision tonight is a test of character. When the desire for profit collides with the duty of stewardship, the commission has one path, to protect what is irreplaceable. Your duty here is not to facilitate commerce, but to serve as the final line of defense for our city's most fragile ecological asset. We have the power and the profound duty to say that the shared natural heritage of Asylum Lake is more important than any single developer. We have the power to reaffirm our highest commitment to stewardship and principle. Our children will judge us not by the speed of our commercial growth, but by the sanctity with which we protected the natural beauty we inherited. And to any woman who wants to use homelessness to justify financial greed, fuck you.
This is Paul Bolt. I'm an Osmo residence, I was, but then I recently moved over to 3326 Tamsin. But when I was over at 5909 Horizon Heights, behind the latitude there, latitude 42, the noise from the road was pretty heavy during the winter. And then during the summer, the foliage would go there and cut the noise in half from the highway. Now, with this development going into that corner, when you're coming up Drake, you can actually see the lake, correct? If you drive by there? So then, yep, there's a little area where you can see it coming down. So if you let a developer go in there and chop the trees down, that green space over there that people like to hike in, all that noise is going to travel right into that area and the neighborhoods behind there. So I'm against this rezoning and I would like to see it as a permanent green space as well. Thank you and have a good night.
Good evening. My name is Justin Suarez. I live on the north side, 1116 North Park Street. Couple things I wanted to touch on tonight. Living on the north side, a lot of, everybody's aware the air quality isn't the greatest. I do walk my neighborhood as often as possible, but me and my family are always looking for an alternative. There's a few green spaces in town, but Asylum Lake is really, really special. The size and the amount of wildlife and the amount of people that go out to enjoy it is impressive. I've traveled the country truck driving. I've been all around the whole country and an area like Asylum Lake is a true gem. And I do fear that changing the development into a commercial is, could be detrimental to the environment there. Couple things. At the public meeting, there was not a lot of information given by the developer. He talked about, he's got a lot of experience, but couldn't really give any real examples of what he wanted to do here. He just said, you know, whatever we build, we're sure that, you know, people will like it and they'll buy. I do find it concerning the using homeless mess as an excuse to develop. Because I mean, if you pave that, that's, you know, I don't really think that's doing better for the environment. And we do have a problem with that in our community as well, which is a separate issue. But that kind of just shows the, I don't know, it just seems a little disrespectful to our community to come in here and use that as a reason that they should build here, you know? And it seems like the only people that are going to profit from this are the developers, not the community. So I'm asking you to deny the request tonight. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ellen Vandermeide and I'm here as a lifelong Kalamazoo resident. I live at 110 Woodward Avenue in the Stewart neighborhood. I know we're all tired. I got up at 6:00 AM today to teach art to high school students. And I will take refuge in Asylum Lake tomorrow morning with my dog Oliver. I'm also here to represent my grandfather, Cal Maston, who spent many years of his life devoted to the protection of Asylum Lake Preserve. He's 91 and unable to be here, so here I am. And I'm asking you to deny the CC zoning. There is no community need for this development. For the future of Kalamazoo, we must protect the few green spaces that we have. My grandfather talks to me about the movements of turkeys in his neighborhood. He tells me about the trees and the deer and what they eat. He has opinions about why they like the things they eat. And I'm worried that this way of life is dying. And so here I am. Please vote no. Please act to protect this land and the plants and animals who live there and the people who love and who will continue to love and care for it. This is our legacy. This is our heart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, everybody, for being here. If it's your first time, like me, thank you. And if it's your third or fourth, thank you. I have a long history with Kalamazoo. I grew up south of here in Sturgis, and that was not a community that I could thrive in. I came to Kalamazoo for college, fell in love with the city, but had to move away for a job. And two springs ago, I was fortunate enough to buy a, or I was fortunate enough to buy a house this year in the Windchill neighborhood. My wife and I had recently talked about moving here. She had graduated from a doctoral program and we were entertaining a move to various locations across the country. We came back to Kalamazoo and we knew right away it was the right fit. Part of it was because of the sense of community, the strong sense of community in the green space. Growing up or living the last 10 years in the east side of the state, I can tell you that having to drive 40 minutes to get to a green space really creates access issues. So to be able to walk within five minutes of a place like this is tremendously valuable. So to be able to walk within five minutes of a place like this is tremendously valuable. Asylum Lake was an integral part of our decision to lay down roots and make the biggest investment of our lives. I know we are among thousands who have done the same thing, and I'm hopeful thousands more will do the same. Preserve the preserve. It only takes common sense to understand the property owner and his legal team are weaponizing our master plan against the people of the city. The master plan was designed to serve all of the people, and we deserve to have pristine natural areas that are truly protected from commercial development. Preserve the preserve. To use the language of a landowner, the users, the users have spoken. We do not want franchise development and commercialization. This land is far more valuable to this city as is, especially given the accelerating impacts of climate change. If the master plan is our guiding document, can we also consider our strategic values? Values such as shared prosperity, inviting public spaces, and environmental responsibility? The master plan describes investing in natural areas as a major goal. Investment can look like a lot of things besides commercial development. I ask you to invest in the well-being of this land by voting no to rezone. Invest in our shared prosperity. Preserve the preserve. Lastly, a previous speaker shared with us the definition of insanity and applied it exquisitely to our shared experience tonight. I would urge you to go a step further than your predecessors and on behalf of
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone that showed up today. I hope the public participation policy is respected in a way that the public can actually be heard here. I know you're here to go by the facts and I appreciate seeing some of you at recent meetings, the public participation meeting and some other public meetings that were to get you more familiar with this, since I know none of you were on this board because of term limits when this originally was coming up. As far as the points that you are here to consider, I believe you have heard both sides of that and much more participation from the actual public for why we believe this is not a part of the strategic vision for the city and a part of the master plan. And, so I don't need to say super many specifics on that, but I just want to say, repeating other people's points, you are not only not required to suggest the approval of this parcel rezone request, based on the 2025 master plan, future use potential zoning, which by the way, was not specified as community commercial, it was specified only as commercial, not the most intensive type of commercial, which is specifically why the planning commission last time said that commercial zoning did not make sense. I encourage you to understand that as we are going through the Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 master plan, that it is pretty clear that the public would not agree with that current ending 2025 master plan future use and would be more in favor of any other zoning other than commercial, especially not community commercial. So, thank you.
I live at Little House on the Prairie, 741. Speculation is a science, they say, with arguable worthiness. My heart goes out to the individual capital holders who looked at the projected strategic plan for the city and speculated so heavily on potential zoning changes that they pledged double the purchase price for a property so zonally ill-suited for anything other than low-impact use. The master strategic plan is not just big, it is a gargantuan body of information. Such undertakings with the best of diligence will have oversights that require redress at some various points. While it was developed with community participation, it would seem that the property in question is a point requiring redress. The community has turned out significantly, three times, to address this specific shortcoming. Conservatively anticipating 100 community members turning out from 7:00 PM on to after 11:00, with an average wage of $10 per hour, that's $1,000 per hour, 4,000 for just this evening. The average time value of those gathered here is with certainty greater than $10 per hour. Personally, I'm a skilled mechanic who is also licensed to be in responsible charge of any water treatment system in the state. My time value rates between 30 and 90 per hour. The reality of the monetized value that our community's time to address this master plan oversight is magnitudes higher than the conservative estimate of $1,000 per hour. The community is turning out again and again, providing tens of thousands' worth of volunteer value to address this oversight and proposing the property as a candidate for rezoning to community commercial. Please maintain residential classification for this property. Thank you.
Okay. So that does it for our in-person speakers, but do we have anyone who's been holding on the line this entire time?
Good evening caller. Not yet. Hold on. Says the microphone is blocked. Give me one second. Change your browser settings.
Anyway, for anyone who is still trying to call in, the number is 888-382-9556. Pardon?
Says our mic is, we don't have access, we're not even trying to get it. Greetings caller. Thank you for your patience. This is, you are on the line with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission and you have three minutes to
Thank you. My name is Thomas Bandle. I reside at 2122 Wade Boulevard, or Wade Avenue, sorry, here in Kalamazoo. And honestly, I think this is a very simple matter. The first person spoke on behalf of what I'll call the petitioners, the people requesting the release, was an attorney who emphasized that you were a quasi-judicial body and that you should follow the facts. What you folks do is to follow the facts. I learned at University of Notre Dame Law School back in the 70s that common law is based upon precedent. Precedent is preceding actions that are very similar in nature by fact and law. Twice before, we have been, we being the citizen of Kalamazoo, have been petitioned through the appropriate panels, et cetera, to change the zoning of the subject property, and twice before, they have been rejected. That is the established precedent. That's what currently exists. The duty and burden on the petitioner is to show beyond clear and convincing evidence that there has been a substantial change in fact that would justify a modification or change in your, in the previous decisions. Again, I'm relying upon the emphasis of their attorney telling you to listen to the facts. I was there, I listened to the facts. There are no facts that justify any kind of a change. In a court of law, this matter would be dismissed on what's called a motion for summary judgment, meaning that in all light, most favorable to the petitioner, there is nothing different that is before the court that would justify any modification of previous decisions. What I'm asking you folks to do is to listen to what their attorney had to say and apply whatever change in fact that there have been, and there have been zero. And please, just follow the existing law which has been established by the precedent previously set by your predecessors, denying this type of relief. Let's see, if there's anything else I want you folks, how much time do I have?
About 25 seconds.
Okay, thank you. Now I think I've hit every point that I think is germane to this issue. Please, please represent the interests of your constituents, not the incidents of what I'll call carpet backers coming in from outside our jurisdiction and asking for something that's ours so that they can get the money from us. Thank you very much.
Good evening caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you. This is Chris Wells. I live in Kalamazoo in the Windchill neighborhood, and five years ago, I started a petition against this change of zoning, and I just wanted to let the commission know that we are now up to 14,244 signatures against rezoning of this property. I hope that we'll take that into consideration.
Good evening caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. You have three minutes.
Good evening and thank you for hearing me. My name is Brandon Carlson and I'm calling from my home on Woodward Avenue within the city limits of Kalamazoo, watching on YouTube, but I am there with other concerns in spirit. My first comment is a rhetorical question for Mr. Rapp and his representatives. Why are you interested in this property if you are aware it requires rezoning? Why attempt to buy property so close to such a fragile ecosystem? And finally, if you are aware that a large amount of environmental waste is present by your own admission tonight, why are you still so adamant about acquiring this fragile property? After all, there is ample vacant undeveloped property available across the street, near Costco, and elsewhere nearby. But to the commission, we don't need development on this corner, we need better stewards of our natural space in Kalamazoo. And to the people of Kalamazoo, when you look at this land, what do you see? Do you see economic potential? Do you see a housing development, a car wash, a strip mall, or some other commercial use for this land? Is the only value of this land in how much currency it can produce, or perhaps is the value of this land higher if it stays vacant, burdened, and green? The people of Kalamazoo do not see economic potential. We see beauty, we see a delicate ecosystem that needs to be protected, not exploited. The value of this land is the natural space. It is the citizens' will that the city's master plan is updated to rezone on this property to keep it green space, but alas, that is an issue for another time. As we've heard tonight, Mr. Rapp and his representatives claim the property would be better maintained after development, but just as we've seen at the national level, the opinions of wealthy landowners could not be further detached from reality. If Mr. Rapp's intent was for anything other than profit, his proposal would provide the data to back his claims, but again, they do not, as we've heard from others tonight. You've asked us to be respectful during our comments, especially to Mr. Rapp, who I know is sitting in the front row, but honestly, why should we be respectful? I sat at the traffic light at Stadium in Drake today for 20 minutes to move approximately 200 yards, adding more traffic to that intersection is the most disrespectful thing I can think of at 11:26 at night. Is this commission civic duty to consider the will of your constituents, the number of which currently sits at 13,328 strong via that change.org petition? Deny recommendation of the applicant's request to rezone the property located at 4301 C.U. Drive to community commercial. Thank you to the community members who have spoken tonight, and thank you to the commission for hearing this out.
You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission. You have three minutes.
Okay. Okay.
Hello, my name is Chandra Kinney. I am the district manager of the Kalamazoo Conservation District. Although today I'm here speaking strictly as a local community member here to request that you deny the rezoning request on Stadium Drive. I understand that the 2025 Master Land Use Plan was developed with good intention, although I must disagree with the alignment of the parcel to our full city master plan. The Kalamazoo City Master Plan reflects a community theme of a vibrant and friendly environment, stating it is vital that we protect and improve the quality of our local natural environment and create stronger communities with targeted, place-based, community-driven investments. Listening to the comments in this room this evening, I think that it is utterly clear that this is not a community-driven investment. In fact, this development doesn't actually seem to fall under any of our strategic planning goals. It does not provide a green and healthy city. It certainly does not aid in stabilizing the local economy to benefit of all, and it does not create a safer community. Thus, I urge you to align with your own strategic goals and provide our city with good governance, making and implementing public decisions in ways that are collaborative, inclusive, and data-driven. And our community has overloaded you with a lot of data and facts, and they have certainly brought their heart with them as well. That's all I have today, so thank you.
Good evening caller. You are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Luke Zimmer. I live on Stevens Avenue in Kalamazoo. Many people have spoken before me about all of the various reasons why we should reject the proposal to rezone this land, but I just want to add that if we're worried about homelessness and the effects of homelessness, in particular on this specific piece of property, the community could do more for that, and that's no reason whatsoever to turn this piece of property into a commercial zone that, quite frankly, will not meet the needs of the folks in Kalamazoo. And that is all that I have to say. So, thank you so much.
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I am a Kalamazoo resident. My name is Rachel Mandrick, and I don't think that you guys should be approving the rezoning here. It does not fit with the 2035 master plan that the city has put forward that has emphasized sustainability for our city. Sustainability is the development that meets the needs of the present without compromising future generations. Commercial building in that area would compromise the future generation's enjoyment of the preserve, it would compromise integrity of that landscape. And the community has been clear that this is not a need that we see, that we need. Thank you for your time.
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission, you have three minutes.
This message has been transcribed. One moment while I notify the caller.
Hi, I am a former resident of Kalamazoo. My name is Mara. I grew up in Kalamazoo. I don't have an elaborate sort of thing planned to say, because I'm kind of doing this on the fly. I just wanted to make a point to say that it's absolutely ridiculous that it's 11:30 at night and I'm having to do this again, because this discussion has come up again, despite the fact that the people of Kalamazoo have already stated quite eloquently before me that this is something that's not a great idea. Just want to throw in my hat and say that I think it's a terrible idea. I respect the land, I respect the animals there, and I love my city, and I appreciate all of the people who are working so hard to fight this so adamantly. It's a terrible idea. Thanks, I yield the rest of my time.
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Alessandra. I live at 3720 Winchell Ave. I'm sure there's more of us to leave or go to sleep. When I visited and I saw Sound Lake and its biodiversity, it was the main reason that I chose moving here, to go to school from Chicago where I fell in love with Lincoln Park, which is a protected conservation area since 1956. If we do not have reassurance, the natural area will be preserved. Heavy commercial use and natural conservation are not compatible. The preservation of Kalamazoo natural resources, which not only affect the environment but directly affects our quality of life, including physical and mental health, much more greatly than a handful of more businesses in an area already saturated with them, would make, and would make a dangerous intersection more dangerous. It's already unpleasant to hear the roar of engines while on a walk. The fact that there are already so many businesses are already more of a reason to protect it, not diminish it. Construction will destroy many trees if it's industrial and land-related, something a homeless encampment did not do. I also urge the city to consider rezoning it to a green zone or purchasing it directly as they spent $9 million for a downtown McDonald's property. I'm sure the community would be willing to help fundraise too. I also wanted to note, the initial speakers brought up that gauge cannabis and their preservation of the resources around it, but that business is not directly adjacent to the preserve, that is adjacent to residential area. Thank you so much for your time. That is all.
Good evening caller, you are on with the City of Kalamazoo Planning Commission, and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Alex Baker. I am from Kalamazoo and I grew up in Oshkosh, so there's a lot of nature out there. I just want to say that everybody's brought up a lot of good points, and I think that moving forward, there should be some kind of system to prevent this type of issue from coming up over and over again, where you have to address it, and everybody has to address it, where there clearly have been facts stated. Some kind of system in place for that, so that somebody doesn't just try to do the same thing over and over again, and hopefully it sticks. I appreciate everything that you've all brought up, and I am applauding you from here, and thank you for your time, and I yield.
Chair Patako, that appears to be the last call.
Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing. Thank you to all the commenters, thank you for everyone who spoke in person, thank you to everyone who waited on the phone, we appreciate your input. So, because we haven't had a big one like this in a while, I'll still go over a few points for the, for the planning commission. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to rezone. You don't need to support the rezoning to make the motion, we just need the motion and the second to start debate. Whoever makes the motion usually speaks first on why they support or don't the motion that they've just made, and the person seconded. We can ask some clarifying questions, correct, but generally, if there's any other clarifying points? Yeah, but generally, this is sort of our time to sort of summarize where we feel we've aligned on the decision.
No motions, but-
With the gavel. Again, just refrain from any comments not related to the requests or the criteria, and the question is whether or not the community commercial district and the use is permitted by right or with development standards or with special use permits are appropriate in this location based on what we've heard tonight and what we've heard through the public process. The questions about design and natural features protection and site plan really can't be answered at this time. There are natural features protection reviews, zoning board of appeals reviews, site plan are separate processes that occur if the rezoning happens. If a community commercial use does require a special use permit, that review, this would again come back in front of this body for consideration. Once a site plan or a use is determined, if it requires a separate use, special use, we'd be considering it again. And the criteria set in place should be consistent to review the request. So, with that, I will take a motion to rezone. Motion to rezone Stadium Drive Number 1 LLC from residential to commercial. I hear a motion from Mr. Tolbert, do I have a supporting?
May I have a second?
Oh.
Motion to rezone Stadium Drive Number 1, 4301 Stadium Drive from RM 15 to RS 5, and RS 5 to CC Community Commercial.
Thank you. Do we have a second? I don't think I'm allowed to.
To second?
To second the motion?
So that we vote?
Yeah.
A second.
Thank you. All right. Do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yeah, I've got some comments. So, I think there's, it feels like a contradiction between the master plan and, I think the master plan kind of contradicts itself. So, I'm reading the standards for rezoning. It says rezoning will allow all uses permitted in the proposed zone, and then any use permitted in the proposed zone. So applicant and future owners can do that. So for this reason, we must, you must consider the compatibility and impact of the proposed zone in addition to the proposed use. And then in the, I read off page 15 from the Winchell Neighborhood Plan earlier, which pretty much states that development along the Stadium Drive corridor should be guided by natural features. And then it goes on to say, businesses that do not require high visibility to attract customers, such as professional offices, appointment-only services, or similar, are ideal. And then it mentions desired traits of those businesses, shared driveway access, parking and other amenities, and then it mentions uses should not generate excessive traffic, noxious odors or noise. And then, we were told that that was aspirational. And then additionally, here in the application, it mentions, I think the terminology was high intensity. So to me, all of that is a contradiction. And then, so from there, I kind of went through the rezoning packet, and so, A, to me, is it consistent with the master plan, or the master plan? So it's a no for me. And then moving on to change conditions, I'm not sure that there are any. And then, community need, I believe this does go against the community needs, especially with respect to the national, natural feature protections overlay. Right now, Kalamazoo is dealing with trying to mitigate or remediate storm runoff from Stadium Drive, so the commercial business is there, and they've been fairly successful. The system was put in place in 2023, but there is still a road salt issue. So if we say yes today and this goes through, what issues will we be dealing with in 10 to 20 years? I think we're looking at an issue of good intentions versus potentially inadequate ability to fulfill the mission of the NFP overlay. So that is a worry of mine as well. Quality of the application versus the city planner report was disappointing to me. I think the application kind of just cited the 2025 master plan as why they should proceed, and then the city planner report, I did a better job than the applicant of explaining why this should go through. So it doesn't seem like there was a lot of due diligence performed, and the relationship between him and Mr. Taitrani is a bit of a red flag for me as well. And then, I do believe that for NFP overlay rezoning or building, I think there should be a higher standard of preliminary planning, so we can have a little bit more insight to what should be done, could be done, X, Y, Z, when it comes to these sort of circumstances, because we have a lot of questions that we do not have the answers to, that we need the answers to. So I would say, I would vote no for all of those reasons.
Clarification? This is a motion to deny the request, correct?
Motion to approve.
The motion is to approve the request, it's just for simple, the simplicity of the language.
Sure.
But a no vote on that would-
Of course, I just want to make sure at this late hour that we're all operating at, at full capacity.
Yeah, understood, yep. So the motion on the table is to approve the request.
Right.
But, you know, you have to-
Understood, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I'm not in some kind of late night fog.
Understood.
Yep.
Did you have any, sorry, did you have any further?
Nothing else.
Okay, thank you. Did you have any comments you wanted to make toward the application?
No. Okay.
I just think that the question of alignment with the master plan is a bit narrow. It seems focused on the future land use map at the expense of the rest of the master plan, and I think that was raised a couple of times tonight, and so I think, you know, holistically, when you think about the master plan and whether this aligns, it's hard to see how that could be a yes. So I think for me, that's a critical decision point.
I keep turning my left to start, but there are general-
Yeah, one of the things that was brought up again and again was, we didn't see any demonstration of a community need, there weren't any statistics cited of types of commercial uses that are needed in the community. If anything, we just heard a lot against that from our fellow neighbors who live near and/or use the park, and potential development on this land would cause, or has the potential to cause detriment to long-term vision of the community. And in our master plans, some things we did mention are smart growth principles, which one of them is to preserve open space, farmland, natural beauty, and critical environmental areas, and the next one right after that is to strengthen indirect development toward existing areas. So as some of my fellow commissioners point out, there are places where I see our master plan in conflict with, with other things that we have in there.
Yeah, just going down the list of the five criteria that we're to evaluate on, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan, the master plan? I agree that there is a little bit more nuance there than on first glance where the future land use plan points at commercial. I think it is a good point that was raised by different individuals we heard from tonight, that that is not specifically the community commercial zoning node, where that could be one of, I think, three or four different commercial aspects of the zoning map, which is also points to, the points that were brought up about the intensity of it. The very first thing that was brought up in the staff presentation about the nature of the site was its nature as a transitional space, and to bring community commercial across the street, I feel like is fostering a pretty harsh transition. All of a sudden, you're abutting CC to the RS 5 that is, as I am like itself. I would be more inclined to- Uh, I would be more inclined to look at less intensive uses that could sort of speak to the transitional nature of the site in that way. Um, going on to the second item, the change conditions, uh, it's a little unclear whether that is to exactly mean change conditions from when it was assigned, the zoning that it is currently, or from change conditions from the last time that it was evaluated on these criteria. I think those, one holds up better than the other, but I don't think a lot has changed in recent memory. Um, community need, this is one of where I feel like the, the application probably struggles the most, where, uh, the list is long, the complaints were heard, the petitions have so many signatures, it's very clear to see the way that the community views this, um, especially when it was brought up that the 2023, um, need survey went out and, uh, preserving natural beauty was ranked ahead of commercial development. I feel like that's a pretty abject failure on, on that front. Um, and then number four is compatible with surrounding uses. Uh, I was a little bit concerned by the staff report, um, that was in recommendation of it where it brought up what's to the north of it, what's to the west of it, what's to the east of it, and just did not mention what is to the south of it, um, which happens to be the, the natural wetlands, um, and an RS5 zoning. Um, obviously, it's not cut and dry, like it is, it is compatible with what's to the north, but it's not very compatible with what's to the south. It's a bit of a judgment call, but I think with the facts in front of us, it's not terribly compatible there. And then lastly, uh, development patterns, um, obviously, uh, city systems are in place as a high-traffic corridor, um, it could get, uh, services very easily, um, but the other thing to evaluate it on is would it exacerbate traffic problems? And we heard the citations of the different statistics about the danger sense of that intersection and also just the traffic congestion of that intersection. So I think the different criterias are dicey at best and very, uh, misaligned at worst.
That is a very elegant and, um, statement. It took the words out of my mouth, but I probably wouldn't have said it, but so well.
I would like to follow up on your point about, um, uh, the intensity of the development. Uh, a portion of the Windchill Neighborhood Plan that I did not get to is, uh, it speaks on, uh, Drake and Stadium Drive, uh, especially at the southern end of the intersection at Drake. Drake Road and Stadium Drive were important natural amenities, namely the Asylum Lake Preserve are located just south of the parcels fronting these streets. The intensity of the development at these sites should be more neighborhood-oriented in scale, supporting a transition from high-intensity commercial to residential areas. Development at these sites should be done in a way that balances the needs of the, needs of development with the community priority to be environmentally responsible. That directly contradicts what we see in the note for standards for rezoning, which tells us any use permitted in the proposal.
Uh, I also just want to say real quick, as is my first ever, uh, meeting as a planning commissioner.
Welcome.
Thank you. Profoundly moved by the incredible outpouring of my friends and neighbors and fellow Kalamazoo residents, speaking about, uh, an issue that you're all so passionate about. So thank you for coming out and sharing your time and sharing your night and I agree with everything else that my fellow commissioners have said about the profound lack of a community need for this rezoning and how, especially given the vagueness of the potential rezoning with no real plan indicating what the land would be used for, you can't articulate a need based off of vagaries. But the thing that really sticks with me is, uh, since we're not allowed to use personal bias, we have to stick to our standards, is D, compatible with surrounding uses. And I just fail to see and have not been convinced by any arguments tonight how a national, natural features protection overlay can be in any way compatible with highest intensity. That phrase really stuck with me, the highest intensity commercial use development. There doesn't seem to be any room for reconciliation between those two things. I think they are diametrically opposed and for that reason, I'm going to have to vote no.
All right, well, unless any other commissioners, um, want to raise any points, I'll just like to say again, thank you for all, um, for, for being here and for listening to everyone and like you, my first meeting actually was the 2020, right? The, the term limits are you can, you can, you can be renewed once. So I, I was there, that was my first meeting, um, and I, I voted no then. And the, the facts, the change in facts was certainly a compelling point, but the one, um, the one speaker that I thought was most sort of compelling, um, when we talked about the broader principles of environmental protection was, uh, the speaker on behalf of the Woods Lake Association when they talked about what they've had to do to, to clean up Woods Lake. Um, I'm aware of their efforts and I, 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 that, that was a solid point that had me convinced because in some ways, you know, this is Stadium Drive, it is a very commercial area. It's not, you know, the prevailing conditions of it are at least ambiguous to me because it's, it's Stadium Drive, it's a high-traffic, high-volume area, it's very used for retail in all sorts of ways. But the adjoining parcels are medium and higher-density residential and the southern parcel is a preserve in the lake. And so the consideration of the area as a buffer or as an increasing usage rather than an outpost of highest commercial followed by residential and then commercial again was a compelling one for me and I didn't hear a compelling reason to go against that. And so I think that there are some points towards some level of commercial development in that area. I think the Windchill, I understand the folks' desire to, to have it be a preserved green space forever, but I think there's also some interest in having some sort of neighborhood or some level of commercial activity there, but not the highest necessary use and something that does respect, um, all the potential, um, environmental concerns of that area which are a myriad. So, unless there's any other questions or comments, we'll take a roll call. And again, a yes is to rezone the property, community commercial, a no is to maintain the property under its current zoning. Wilson?
Oh, you're...
No. Curtis?
No.
Petelko?
No.
Tolbert?
No.
Aldette Baumann?
No.
Kostreva?
No.
Bissinett?
No.
Yeah!
All right, folks, please, please. Been a long night, we don't yield. It's enough. All right, we have more business. Oh yeah, we're not done. There is still the city planners' report, the public, the site planner's view, and actually, we still have to take more public comments. It's a requirement under the Michigan Open Meetings Act, so we, there are time for general public comments coming up if anyone is still here.
So there's not going to be a city planner report this evening. We do have Commissioner Prado here though.
Okay.
Um, and so, um, we'll use the ti- this time, or whatever time I would normally give an update for, um...
Do we want to, do we want to do that before the, I'm just looking through the agenda here?
Totally up to you.
Yeah, no, I just, I just want to make sure we're following the agenda we've laid out.
Do you guys want to go in the hallway?
It's okay.
What? Yeah, let's just stick to the agenda, so we can skip the city planners' report though. But we do have a site plan review list, is there anything we need to, do we need to accept it or do we just need to acknowledge that it exists?
There's any questions on it, I'd be glad to answer them.
Not...
I do want to reinforce something that Bobby said earlier, um, there's a joint training between a number of boards on what NFP is and how the overlay works and what it means, so I would encourage everybody to attend that. Um, what's the date again, do you know off the top of your head?
November 12th, Wednesday, 2:45 North Rose Street.
And that is a great idea, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, anybody, any questions on the site, site plan review? Okay. Okay, general public comments, anybody who would like to make a general public comment on any non-agenda item, now is your opportunity. I, do we have to do the phones still, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah. I'll give the number again even.
Thank you.
Something else? Actually, the last time, back in 2020, the person, just the only public comment was thanking us for sitting here. But you don't need to do that either.
No calling comments?
Nope, no calling comments?
There was none, I said there was none.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that, okay. All right, I guess we'll close that portion of the public hearing again. So now, Chris, now is the city, city commission liaison comments.
Promise I won't keep you, keep you all long.
Bless you, sir.
This, uh, month is actually my sixth year as a city commissioner. Uh, you know, I've sat in budget meetings where we have hundreds of millions of dollar budgets where there's two people in the audience and I'm pretty sure those people might have been there by accident. I love when people show up and they're passionate about something and it's incredible for me to see that. And I am inten- intensely grateful for people when they show up and care because the day that scares me is the day that people don't show up. That's the day that scares me. So I also want to thank all of you, um, just watching you from an audience perspective, it's really nice to be able to sit and watch from that perspective and I really appreciate how intentional you were to listen to each person who came up and treat each person's time like it was precious. Um, that means a lot to folks and I know you all are very tired and whatnot as well. I wanted to welcome you to your first meeting, congratulations for being here, great test for you tonight as well. Delight. And then very much lastly, I just want to take a moment just to recognize some of my outgoing colleagues, Commissioner Cooney and Decker are going to be stepping off at their last meeting on the 17th. Uh, they've been exceptionally, uh, great colleagues to work with over the last four years. Um, we have a special meeting, we have one, one night of meetings coming up in November here, uh, on Monday, November 17th. It's, uh, our oath of office night. So at 5 o'clock, we're, we're going to be doing the swearing-in for our new colleagues. Um, I was very excited to see tonight, uh, incoming Vice Mayor-elect Drew Duncan was here tonight and then Commissioner-elect Jay Slavy I saw was here as well and very excited to the opportunity to work with them and do whatever I can to support them, uh, in their transition as well. And then also congratulate, um, Commissioner Hoffman and Mayor Anderson as well for getting elected, but, um, encourage people to show up that evening, oath of office, uh, at 5 and then we have our 56 city commission first meeting with the new group starting at 7 o'clock. So anyways, appreciate you all as always, I know you all are basically volunteers and appreciate your time.
Basically?
Yeah.
Is someone else getting paid? Thank you. Um, thank you, Commissioner Prado, appreciate your, um, appreciate your update. All right, um, planning commissioner comments, anybody else want to?
I just wanted to echo what Mr. Prado said and thank people for the outpouring of every kind of public sentiment that we got tonight. Uh, meetings like these are long and everybody sticks it out and I really appreciate that, but it is so worth it to hear from the public. Um, I did want to promote, it was mentioned a couple of times during public comment, the process for the new updated master plan, Imagine Kalamazoo 2035 is currently ongoing. Um, so if you want to help to try to avoid some of these more muddied waters that we can run into when we are trying to enforce the master plan in coming years, you can help us out and, uh, give public input on those, uh, those ongoing proceedings with the new master plan.
That, that is a great point.
Yeah.
I'd like to get in a plug for, um, this amazing turnout tonight, but also that I want every citizen to know they are free to apply for boards. And on many, many boards through the years, they don't all get, you know, a hundred people in the seats, but nothing stops citizen participation and we saw that tonight, but we all know it always doesn't work this way. So, but a beautiful night for Kalamazoo in terms of the turnout especially.
All right. Oh, we made it just past midnight, that's great. All right. All right, thanks, I'll just, I'll just say thanks to you all, um, appreciated, thank you to our new members, did you start to?
Did we need a motion adjourned?
No, we, I can just, I can just declare it, yeah. I declare the motion, I declare the meeting adjourned at 12:02 a.m. On Friday, November 7.
How late did you go on the...
About 1.